In the meeting, I'm sorry about that. My guess is Galen's going to join us. I'll introduce her when she comes on. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Steve, can we have a roll call?
Sure. Mr. Cantor?
Here.
Mr. Witherspoon?
Here.
Mr. Stone?
Here.
Mr. Mancini?
Here.
Mr. Goldstein?
Here.
And Mr. Schulman?
Here. Did you catch, you caught Mr. Rowena?
No. Where's Mr. Rowena?
He, there's no picture, but he's here with us.
I don't see. Oh, okay. I don't see his name anymore. We'll take him at his word.
Can you hear me?
There, oh, there you are. Okay, yes, Mr. Rowena is here. Gotcha.
Okay, we're going to begin with two public hearings. I mean, I look at the people who are listed here. You've all, I believe, attended hearings before, but in case there's someone who has not, let me explain the way public hearings work. First, the applicant will give a presentation. During that presentation, commission members are welcome to ask questions. And in fact, commission members can ask questions at any, anytime. When the presentation is completed, we open it up to the public. We do not typically put limits on how long members of the public may speak. However, you only get to speak once, so please make sure that with that one opportunity, you cover everything that you want to say because we will not be able to call on you a second time. We also ask that comments be kept appropriate even for children. We typically do not have problems with this, but should something occur, we will be required to cut you off. So just keep it polite. And I ask that when you're invited to speak and Mr. Baker will, at the appropriate time, explain how that's done, that you give your name and your address. When all of the public comments have been made, we turn it back over to the applicant. And again, commissioners, if they wish, may ask questions about the project. We then close, close out the hearing and may, under review and action on pending applications, take a formal action. That could be approval, it could be disapproval. There could be additional questions so that we may want to extend the public hearing. I want to note that Commissioner Galen Wells has joined us. So the entire commission is with us this evening. With that, I'll call on the representative of the applicant for 2021-16 R/SP 132 Flax Hill LLC. 132 Flax Hill Road Proposed Building Zone Regulation Text Amendment to Reduce the Minimum Lot Size Requirement for Historic Incentive Developments in Conjunction with a Five-Unit Historic Incentive Development.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Adam Blank, I'm an attorney here in Norwalk for the applicant Workforce Partners LLC through one of their entities, 132 Flax Hill LLC. Workforce Partners is the owner of 132 Flax Hill. It's about .23 acres of land located in the D-zone, and it is listed on the local historic resources inventory. If I can share my screen, it may take a minute to load up. You guys able to see it?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I've got an aerial up. There's 132 Flax Hill. You've got Washington Street here and MLK Clay Street ends here and has the staircases down to MLK to get to the train station. The property currently consists of a multifamily building in need of some updating. On the left is the existing building. The building, what we're looking to do, the building's got three units in it, and we're looking to renovate and rehab that existing structure by adding two units. The two units would be added simply by reconfiguring interior space in the property. No addition to the building itself, no expansion of the footprint. And, and I should note that based on the existing lot size and the existing regulations, this build, the lot size is large enough for five units, which is permitted in the D-zone. There are other non-conformities for the property, but it, the D-zone allows five units, and this lot would be large enough for five units, which is what we are proposing for this. And that's without any type of historic waiver. So we are in front of you with a text change or text amendment and a special permit application. The planning commission has reviewed the text change. They unanimously recommended its approval. The historic commission also reviewed the text change and unanimously recommended its approval. The historic commission also considered the special permit application, reviewing the scope of the facade improvements that are proposed and the waivers that are requested. And they also unanimously endorsed the special permit application. We've received all of the necessary SEAC departments sign-offs. And you have a staff memo in your file that does not identify any concerns or problems with the application. Tonight, we've got Todd Bryant with us, who's the historic consultant. Mark Hopper, who's a historic architect. You've heard from him on a number of other similar projects. Tess Schwartz for Traffic, who'll give you just a very brief presentation, as well as Ricardo Caballos on Engineering, who'll give a brief presentation. And Kevney Moses, who's a representative of the developer and is also a landscape architect, will speak to you a little bit about the project and the landscaping. But first, I'd like to talk to you for just a minute or two on the proposed text change, and then we can get to the special permit application. So in the D-zone currently, if you have a historic structure, you can ask the zoning commission to waive certain regulations. And this is the, the current text allows for, you've got to have a minimum lot area of 12,000 square feet. So you've got to be a really large lot in the D-zone. And if you do, and it's on a local or a national register, then you can get, you can ask for certain waivers that can be granted based upon a special permit application. Now, the D-zone allows lots as little as 5,000 square feet. So many or most, if not almost all lots in the D-zone are not eligible currently for historic preservation regu-, regulation waivers. And we thought that was odd because we didn't see a connection between whether you ought to preserve a historic structure and the size of the lot that it sits on. And that you might have historic homes that you want to preserve that happen to be on smaller lots. And this, our this lot is over 9,000 square feet, so we're not even a really small lot. And we had initially proposed a 9,000-square-foot cutoff just to give you an incremental move down on lot size. Staff had suggested that we eliminate the requirement entirely, which we've adopted and amended our application to reflect a proposed reg change to just simply eliminate the lot area requirement. This is not, you have a comprehensive list of all properties in the D-zone that are on lot sizes less than 12,000 square feet that are listed on a historic inventory. This is not all of them. This is just some of them, ours being the first one shown here. And I think, or I hope you'll agree that some of these are worthy, if not all, of preservation and improvement and that we shouldn't, we should allow these to be preserved rather than, you know, demoed for, you know, bigger box type of development. And of course, even with those, each one would have to be considered on a case-by-case basis first, on a special permit, not a site plan, a special permit application. The, since we initially filed the applications, there have been some tweaks to the architectural improvements. And the so, so I think, we think that this is the text change application, we think it's a win, a sort of a win-win for everyone because it promotes, certainly promotes historic preservation and improvement. It also provides some incentive to property owners to preserve their homes and to invest, invest money into those structures in exchange for waivers. And, and of course, if you don't like a particular application, you can always vote the, the special permit application down. The, the recent POCD, the Plan of Conservation and Development that was adopted, I guess now it's maybe it's not quite so recent, but 2019, found as goals within the POCD to preserve the integrity and character of historic structures, historic landscapes and cultural resource sites within the city of Norwalk, develop a historic preservation plan to establish policies, practices, and criteria for preservation of building and site important to the history of Norwalk, revise zoning and development regulations to promote preservation and adaptive reuse of historic structures. And we think that this text change does exactly that. The, and, and I, again, I'll point out back when you folks approved fairly recently a similar-ish text change on the East Wall Street Historic Project, that one had a lot size requirement, and I believe it was Commissioner Rowena, who had some concerns over the fact that it only applied to the largest of lots in that zone and made the historic preservation reg unlikely to be utilized by the majority of historic structures in that home, in that zone. And so again, I think this fits in line with, with some of the thinking that we've heard in the past that, that you ought to just, if you're going to preserve homes, it doesn't really matter what, what size lot there are, if they're worthy of preservation. And that's, that's the overview of the text amendment. As I mentioned, Todd Bryant, who was our consultant on the historical aspect, he's here tonight. He's not going to give a presentation, but he can answer the more historic geared questions that aren't project-specific. The historic architect can answer those in a little bit. I think, but with that, let me move, move forward to Workforce Partners, to give to you just a brief about Workforce Partners. You've seen a number of applications from them in the past. They own and operate essentially workforce housing units. They tend to purchase properties in need of some TLC, some capital improvements. They update them, they modernize them, and then they lease them. They don't lease them as, as quote affordable units under your, you know, 10% affordable reg. But they, they are not in the luxury market, and so they sort of fill that gap for people that can't afford luxury units, but who may not necessarily qualify for the workforce housing as it's defined under your regulations. And those units typically, the ones that they lease are typically occupied by those earning 60 to 100% of the average area median income. They concentrate their operations here in Norwalk. They own quite a number of properties in town, some of which are historic. Within the last year or two, you've seen this project from them, which was the, this is at 204 Flax Hill Road, which was a historic preservation project that was approved as well as at One Elmcrest Terrace, which is another one of their projects. And so this particular project, the one in front of you, 132 Flax Hill, we're asking for you to grant the special permit application. And we're looking for what we consider a few small zoning waivers within that historic regulation that will allow us to invest in the improvement to this property, both on the exterior and a substantial amount on the interior, and increase it from three units to five units. It's a 3,000-square-foot, three-unit multifamily home. And again, we're not asking for any density bonus here. And I think, if I may, what I'll do at this point is I'd like to let the rest of the team present, and then I'll come back and run through with you a little bit on the technical of, of the waivers that we're actually seeking, but I'll let them go through the, the project for you. So at, at this time, Mark Hopper, the architect, Mark, if you are able to take control.
Thank you, Adam. Can you, can the commissioner see my screen?
We can.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple, again, my name is Mark Hopper. I'm a principal with Crosskey Architects in Hartford, Connecticut. Before I get going, I'd like to just have a couple opening remarks. I think a high majority of our work is on historic buildings. And as a firm that works on historic structures, we really recognize that not every building that deserves preservation is a landmark building, like the Lockwood Matthews Mansion or the Mark Twain House of the State Capitol. The latter two are projects that we are currently working on in our project, in our office. And we also understand that buildings that contribute to the character of their neighborhood or ones that could be improved to enhance the character or neighborhood, you know, should be supported or guided by historic preservation incentives. And I think, you know, what you have in your zoning code really addresses those things. And, and we do see projects that we work on in other municipalities that don't have these types of incentives. And unfortunately, when you get into, you know, certain design parameters, you're not able to, as, as preservation architects, we're not really able to, you know, properly address improvements to buildings. So we think that, you know, what Norwalk has is, is very positive. I'd just like to take a couple minutes for, to talk a little bit of a brief history about the project to really illustrate how these incentives can really have a positive outcome on a project, you know, big or small. When Workforce Partners first approached us with this project, it was as outlined, as Attorney Blank described, moving from a three-family unit to a five-family unit by renovating and reconfiguring the first and second floor. When we got into the, the code aspects of the projects, we found that we would, that it made the most sense to utilize the existing building code, which is a relatively new code. It's a little slightly different than, than the current state building code, but it's a, a part of it, a piece of it. And what that essentially, when you dive into the code aspect of the project, work on existing buildings are categorized by the level of alteration. And what we find here is because we're more than two-thirds of, we're altering more than two-thirds of the building, we, we fall into the highest degree of alteration, which also is the highest degree of code compliance. And where that leads us is down a path of having to provide sprinklers to the building for the first and second floor, and even including the third floor, which is essentially not being touched. But it also triggers code compliance for handicap accessibility. And those two aspects of the building code have greatly affected the, the approach to the building. As we got, as we initially got started, our initial instinct from addressing a, the handicap accessibility was to provide a ramp at the front of the building and to provide a handicap lift at the rear of the building to provide handicap accessibility to the first two floors. This building is obviously small enough. It's not required to have an elevator. So our requirement was really to make those first two-floor units accessible, adaptable and accessible. So our initial instinct was to place the ramp to the front of the building and the front porch to the side or, you know, along the side setback. And as we started to discuss the strategy, the project at that time, we recognized that we would have a reduction in the area of recreational space. And our guiding principle at the, at the initial stage of the project was really to reduce or eliminate any needs or encumprances situations that did not meet current zoning code, which led us down a path of providing the ramp at the front of the building. And we headed down that, down that course. And unfortunately, the project to some degree was, was put on hold as we all responded to, to COVID. And it gave the owner some time to, to look at the project and try to address some other issues that we're going to speak about a little bit later on things that we need to address with this project as it relates to the zoning regulations. And during that pause, it really became, I think, clear to everyone is that to make this project work, we really needed to utilize the historic preservation incentives. And we set down a path to then present this project and get feedback from the historic commission. And once they reviewed the project, they obviously, they had a, you know, suggestion. They really want us to take a look at, you know, moving that ramp off the, off the front porch and finding a way to gain access in another, in another fashion. And that essentially led us to where we are today. So the moving of the ramp and making improvements to the, to the front porch and adding historic detailing, which were not part of our original proposal for the project, I think have, you know, provide great enhancements to this project and certainly will enhance the character of the, of the neighborhood. So getting off the discussion, getting into the nitty-gritty of the project, what you see here in front of you, as we had described before, at the, along the top of the page are the existing floor plans for first, second, and third. And below that, corresponding up to above, are the proposed renovations to first, second, and third. And what you can see is we had an existing three-bedroom on the first floor, which we're now converting to two one-bedroom units. One access off the front porch, again, with a relocation, the centering of the stair on the main entrance, and a handicap ramp that comes into the side of the porch. And as you'll see, a screen by landscaping. So we've got the unit, first floor unit that is entered off the front of the building. The second first-floor unit is, is entered off the rear of the building. Again, there's a reconfigured porch, stairs, and handicap lift that gets us to that level. The upper levels, level units are accessed by existing stairs that are going to be maintained. There's a front stair that gets to the front unit on the second floor. And there's a rear stair that gets to the second unit at the rear on the second floor, but also provides access to the third-floor unit. What you see here is the dark walls are new construction. The, the double-line, non-filled walls are existing construction. So you can see the amount of work on both the first floor and the second floor as we move to the building. And as you'll see, there is some slight configuration to improve movement space and improve bathrooms at the third floor. So these are the improvements that we're, that we're proposing, plan layout that we're proposing for all three floors.
So Mark, can I ask you a quick question?
Absolutely.
I think if I heard you correctly, you said that, that ramp in the front is now moving. So it's just going to be, is that, is that correct? Did I hear that? Did I understand that correctly?
You see is this is the new location. It's different from our original submission and different from the first.
Gotcha. So the initial probably had that what, coming across like parallel to the front or something like that?
It had a switchback that was in this location.
So now it's more tucked to the side and more in line with what the historical commission was asking about?
That's correct.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome. So moving to exterior elevations, we show all four elevations. The west elevation is the main elevation that, that faces Flax Hill. What you see to the right is a detail of the, the porch elements. This front porch, as part of this project, will be rebuilt in its entirety. And we'll, and with that, we're including historically accurate detailing that kind of, that matches the Queen Anne's style of this existing building. This project, looking at the south elevation as we kind of move around the building in a counterclockwise motion, you see how the exist, the new proposed ramp is that the side of the building extends towards the rear and then just attaches to the side of the front porch. What this also illustrates is with this project and the inclusion of sprinklers that we will be able to eliminate the existing metal fire escape from the building, which I think is another aesthetic improvement overall. You'll also see that rear elevation, the, some work on the rear porch. Moving around to the north elevation, you'll see a side view of the front porch, but as well as you see the side elevation of the rear porch and the elevation of the, the handicap ramp. I'm sorry, the handicap lift. The lift is at the rear of the building and is really located where it really won't be seen clearly from Flax Hill. And we thought that that, you know, putting this new piece of, of work at the rear of the building obviously was, was a positive thing from, from a preservation and design standpoint. Going to our final slide here, you get a, this gives you a sense of colors and materials. The work on the exterior of the building really is limited to the removal of the, of the fire escape and the rebuilding of the front porch and the rebuilding of the construction of the ramp. The existing exterior materials are going to remain the same, which is this Dutch lap siding. The shutters at the front of the building are to remain asphalt shingles. For the new roof will be architectural shingles. And there will be just one new window at the rear of the building where a room is converted to a bedroom, and we need to modify the windows to comply with, with code-required egress windows. What we show to the lower left-hand corner of the, of this board is the, is the historic coloration of the building. We're obviously coming up with something that matches with the current Dutch lap siding as well as the window and window frame colors. So we've got this two-tone coloration that comes into play and highlights the detail of the, of the porch columns. The landscaping that, we'll talk a little bit more in our presentation, is illustrated you know, on the Flax Hill elevation to really shows the amount of new landscaping that will be added to the building, but how that landscaping also enhances the, the entrance location, the, the relocation of the stairs centered on the main entrance, but then also hides to some degree the ramp as it leaves the porch and then goes down the, the south elevation of the building. Porch materials and types are PVC product. Those products have come a long way. And we've selected materials that, you know, are illustrated in the, in the elevation, again, are consistent with the historic nature of the building and, and the style. And if there aren't any And if there aren't any questions, I'll turn this over to an engineering review.
Ricardo?
All right. Good evening. I'm Ricardo Ceballos. I'm a registered professional engineer here in Connecticut. I'm the engineer of the project. I'm going to share my screen with you. The improvements to the site included creating a more functional and safer driving and parking areas with parking stalls per city standards, including two handicap spaces. For this project, I prepared a stormwater management plan per city standards to determine peak flow and total runoff volume for all storm frequencies. As shown in the report that you guys received, the reduction of the peak runoff rate and runoff volume is achieved through the installation of an underground infiltration system, which provides temporary storage for runoff. The proposed improvements will have no adverse drainage impacts on surrounding properties or city infrastructure. With that, if you guys have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Otherwise, Tess, if you're available to talk again briefly on the traffic report?
Sure. Good evening. My name is Teresa Schwartz. I'm a licensed traffic engineer. With TESERA Engineering, I prepared a traffic study for this site. Typically for two residential units, we wouldn't prepare a traffic study. It's going to generate one trip during the morning peak period and two trips during the afternoon peak period. But due to the historic nature of the site, a traffic study was required. I did look into the most recent three years of crash data from the Connecticut Crash Data Repository. And there were no unusual accident frequency or severity. The site distance from the site driveway meets the required 335 feet to provide safe egress. And the, speaking with Mike Giassak and Norwalk Engineering, the concern, the only concern he had really was parking. And we're improving the parking on this site. Currently existing legal parking spaces, there are no parking spaces on the Flax Hill Road, 132 Flax Hill Road site, no legal parking spaces. And on the adjacent site, 138 Flax Hill Road, there are six spaces. In the proposed condition, there will be 132, sorry, 132 Flax Hill Road, there will be six parking spaces. 138 Flax Hill will be providing eight parking spaces. So that's a total of 14. So you have a net gain of eight parking spaces. So I think this goes above and beyond in addressing the parking needs at this site. So in my professional opinion, this addition of the two residential units will not have a significant impact to traffic on the surrounding road network.
Thank you, Tess. If there's no questions, Kevin Moses, for the developer and the landscape architect.
Adam, I'm sorry, I have a, I have a question. It's Frank Mancini. As it relates to the parking, there is a total of five units. And, and how many parking spaces in total between?
Sure. So, so, and that's, it's kind of the ironic thing here is that, in my view, the primary waiver that we're looking for is a waiver from the parking reg, which would normally require for this, for our site, seven spaces or six and a half. You'd round up to seven. And we're asking to put six on our site. And I think you've got Ricardo still sharing his screen. So I think you should, should be able to see their number here. Oh, they're gone. I can, I can pull it back up. The, okay, there you go. So you see there's six, there's six spaces numbered on 132 Flax. And there's eight shown on 138 Flax. There's, there's a shared driveway that will finalize upon approval, an easement agreement allowing or confirming access to both parcels through the shared driveway onto Flax Hill. So there's eight and six. Currently, there's zero legal on Flax, although you can fit a couple of cars in there. And on one, that's on 132 Flax. On 138 Flax, there's currently six spaces with eight being proposed.
Scott, let it go.
I, I think what my question, and maybe you could answer it in a simple way, is if I move into one of those one bedrooms and there's six spots and there's five people assuming, right, to live in there? And if I wanted to take a friend over or two, would there be ample parking for them? Because if there's no parking on Flax Hill, I just wondered where, where those friends would, would end up parking.
So one, there is on-street parking on Flax Hill directly in front of these properties. So there's, there is that. But on top of that, there's technically, there's one quote extra space. If you're just counting one car per unit, that's not exactly how the regs do it. But if you did one car per unit, there'd be one extra space on 132. And there's a few extra spaces on, on 138 because there's, you're getting eight spaces. But if you were to compare what's there now, right? So what's, from what's there now, you've got a total of six spaces for those two parcels. So we're saying we're going to add two units, but we're going to add eight spaces. So whether or not the outcome will make, will always allow parking for all guests on site, I don't know if that's going to be the case, but it's certainly going to decrease any, any problem with parking because we're adding a lot more spaces and only two units.
This is Marcella. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
And what's the occupancy of the building? Is it actually going to be five people maximum? Or could it be two people in a one-bedroom?
So, so the, the, the regulations kind of define who can be in a unit. And, and it's not necessarily one person. It's, it's a, a family. And I could try to pull up the actual reg, but it's not, we don't have a whole lot of control over, over who's in there. It's not supposed to be subdivided into a whole bunch of unrelated individuals, which is, which is in your reg and the definition.
You guys aren't necessarily changing the footprint, but you're adding more units. So you're adding more density in the building. And I'm just curious for the, like, the quality of life within the building? If there's, I'm curious also at the rent rate.
Kevin, may be able to speak to the, the rent rate? And who they see as, as likely tenants?
Sure. Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Kevin Moses with Workforce Partners, also a landscape architect. So our rental rates, as Adam had mentioned, they fall between 60 and 100% of our local AMI, or area median income. And what that does is it provides a much-needed housing stock to the Norwalk community. And that is for people that do not necessarily qualify for subsidized housing and nor people that can afford market rate housing. So I can't tell you exactly what our rental rates will be. Obviously, there's been a lot of fluctuations in the market over the pandemic, in particular the last year. However, you know, they will fall within our typical strata for rental rates, which is 60% to 100% of AMI.
And this is a public hearing, I guess it'd be remiss to say, what is the AMI? Just for, just for the record here, for this region?
Area median income, it actually is based off the state median income by the workforce housing.
That's why, I'm sorry, the state, not region.
And last I looked, it was like 99.5 somewhere in there. So.
And just, just so you know, the, in, in your regs, and this is true in all zones in Norwalk, but in your regs, we're asking for five dwelling units. And then a dwelling unit says that it's going to be occupied by one family. And then the term family is a defined term. And a family is defined as a person living alone or a group living together as a single nonprofit housekeeping unit and sharing common bathing, sleeping, cooking and eating facilities with, with a common living room space. That housekeeping unit may include any number of people related by blood, marriage, adoption or legally recognized foster relationship, but shall never include more than three unrelated individuals. And by and large, that definition is sort of mandated on the city based upon federal, you know, protections for discrimination and things of that nature. So there's not much leeway for the city to be more stringent than what's in that definition already.
And Adam, if I could just make one other point here, I think it was brought up best by Mr. David Westmoreland on the Historic Commission, where he noted that in, in most cases, three-bedroom and two-bedroom units come with a greater parking burden because those units can house more individuals and oftentimes kind of turn into this SRO or shared residence occupancy type of arrangement, where again, it, it puts a higher burden on the parking on site because commonly those types of units, the twos and the threes, come with more vehicles. And that can also be a bad thing for neighborhoods, to David's point. Long-term resident of Norwalk, landscape architect himself, I believe, and sharp guy. But he noted that these smaller unit types actually, in his experience in Norwalk, should come with lesser traffic and parking volume. And I think to Adam and Tess's point, we're actually so net positive on parking. And when you also consider that there's available parking on Flax Hill Road, I don't think it, it's a question of whether or not we're creating a better condition versus what's there today, I guess.
All right. Kevin, can you just briefly go over the landscaping?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll share my screen quickly. Okay. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Terrific. Thank you. So I'll just keep this very brief and simple. I think Mark did a great job in explaining the project as did Adam and the rest of the team. So quickly, high level, the landscape palette here is either native or adaptive. And all that means is that they're either plants native to Connecticut, New England, or adaptive to this environment. And the big point about that is that, a couple of things. One, they attract wildlife and two, and, and support, you know, the natural ecology of our area. But secondly, they are drought, excuse me, drought tolerant and come with a lesser water and maintenance regime. So again, what we're trying to do here is create a sustainable site, which is part of our guiding mission. And the landscape palette is a direct extension of that. At the same time, we also wanted to pay homage to the historic nature of this site and the architecture. So we chose, again, within the native and adaptive palette, things that might have been planted early in the century. Foxwoods, hydrangeas, liriope, lilac. And then have buffered it with some cool native adaptive perennials like Hamlin grass and nepeta. We also, also, we also always tried to incorporate fragrant things into our landscapes to help improve the resident experience. So upfront, again, we've got some boxwood, some hydrangeas, some perennials. Also help buffer and screen out a little bit of the height of that new porch that we're putting on, but allowing the architectural elements above on that porch to really sing and be viewed from the street. We also have three new trees up front that will really help improve that street frontage along Flax Hill Road and also be an extension of similar tree plantings that we've installed on 138 and 35 Clay, which two sites we're very proud of. I would encourage any of the commission members to take a cruise by. We've put a lot of work and love into those two properties. So this will be an extension, if you will, to what we've done there. We also have two new shade trees in the backyard to reduce heat island effect and create some shade for the resident area just next door. And speaking to resident amenities, I just want to make it very clear that there are zero resident amenities on the property today. Zero recreation space on the property today. And we are creating recreation space and resident opportunities, amenities rather, through this new plan and project. And in addition, there's an existing resident area on 138 Flax Hill just next door. It has two grills, a nice patio table, cool new landscaping. And the residents of 132 will also have access to those amenities next door. I think that's the bulk of my presentation. If there's any questions, I'm happy to field them.
When is it, when it says turf area, that just means grass, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, cool.
Yep.
And then didn't think we'd actually like turf, but I should double check. No problem.
All right. Thanks, Kevin. So now we, I'll just now go through the waivers that we're looking for. And you know, so in most, if not all of the historic preservation applications that you've seen thus to date, you know, the, they have sought from you out what I would describe, not always, but predominantly is fairly significant waivers that would allow quite a bit more density than would otherwise be permitted in the particular zone where the development was. And so what we're asking for here, I think, is fairly modest. When you look at it, I'll kind of just run through them for you. The existing lot width, there's a minimum lot width. If you want to have a building lot in the D-zone, you've got a minimum lot width. This existing lot does not meet that lot width. We're not making it any smaller. We're not changing it. We're just going to, asking to, to keep the, the lot width, which is pre-existing, non-conforming. It's not wide enough. But again, that's not going to make it any worse. It's just keeping it as is.
Attorney, attorney blank, what, what is the requirement? What it, what it, what are the number of feet you're asking for?
Let me see if I can. I have it here in the CLS. Lot width is 80 feet is the minimum. We're at 62, which is what's proposed.
Thank you.
All right. You've still got my screen in front of you, right?
Yes.
Okay. So in addition to the lot width, recreation space is required. And, and you'll see it, it stops right here in the building. It doesn't include the front, although you saw from the landscape plan that this is going to be all turf, grass and, and some trees. Doesn't, you can't count the front setback area. But existing is zero. We're proposing 154 square feet of recreation area for every two, instead of the per unit, instead of the 200 feet that's required. So that's a total reduction of what would otherwise be required by 231 square feet. Although as, as Kevinny mentioned, there will be access to the recreation area here at 138 Flax as well. That is not counted towards our recreation space, but, but would put us over the minimum anyway without the waiver. But we're not, we're not asking for it to count for 132 because it's already there at 138. So we, we're asking for that. The, the regulations require, when you have a multi-family in the D-zone, on the rear and sides, there to be a five-foot buffer strip. We are not eliminating any buffer, but we're also not creating a buffer. In fact, as you heard, there's a shared driveway right here in the, in the property line. So there's, there's no buffer between these two sites. There's, there's a driveway. There's an existing exit here that doesn't, that doesn't create the five-foot buffer. So we, and then on the back, it's, let's say debatable about whether or not we think, see, we think we meet the five feet, but, but if it was four foot 11, we wouldn't want to have, you say that we are out of compliance. So technically, the application asks for a waiver of that five-foot buffer on all three sides of the property. But again, we're not making anything worse. We're, we're just not creating that buffer. And then under your parking regulations for five units, it would require six and a half spaces, which you would round up to seven. So seven would be required. We are proposing six spaces on site, which is one less than what's required. Although you also heard we are adding the. Although you also heard we are adding the handicap space. And we are improving the number of parking spaces overall between this site and 138 compared to what exists currently. And to give you, just to give you some perspective on the sort of ask that we're asking, because there was at a earlier meeting, some, I don't know, criticism or concern about whether we were doing enough to preserve the historic structure to warrant the waivers that we are seeking. And in response to that, make just a couple of points. So you guys recently approved a large mixed-use project over at 10 Monroe Street. And that was almost entirely new construction. But they were preserving one historic building on the corner there at Chestnut. And they were making it nice. And it's a wonderful project. I'm glad, I'm glad that you supported it. But in exchange for them preserving that one building, which was nothing close to being the bulk of the development there, you gave them a 20% increase in density. They got 23 extra units on that project. They went from 127 to 150 because of the historic waiver that they got by preserving that property. So that was that project. And if you were to translate that to value, 23 more units, it's got to be worth 6 million bucks, right? It's a big, that's a big, that's a nice thing that they got in exchange for preserving that structure. And again, I think it was wonderful, but that was, that's one. You recently also approved over at 3 East Wall Street, a project there. And that was a historic preservation waiver. On that one, as you probably recall, they were going to preserve the existing front building and then put on a huge building in the back where the bulk of the units were not in a historic structure. It was really an add-on. And they were allowed 13 units by right, or in that zone, without any historic preservation. You gave them 26 units through the waivers. So they doubled the units that they were allowed. They got 13 extra. Again, 13 units, they're a different neighborhood than the other project. But that added, you know, $3 million or so of value to that project. And they offered fairly comprehensive improvements to the main, to the original historic structure. Again, I think it was the right thing to do, and I think both projects were wonderful. But to give you that kind of a perspective, we're not asking for a density bonus here. We're asking to keep, let us keep things the way they are without the buffer, with the lot size that doesn't meet the requirement, and to cut us a break on a half of a parking space in exchange for making some meaningful but modest improvements to the facade and a complete gut renovation on the interior. And you know, on this project, so the developer, the property owner owns all three buildings here, 35 Clay, 138, 132. One of the things that's nice about this regulation is it doesn't just encourage you to improve your historic structure. It encourages you to keep it, right? So they could demo these properties and put a big box development in there, bang a little bit more density out of it with bigger units that were made to fit with the existing zoning regs. But that would probably be a negative for the sort of fabric of the neighborhood. And so what we like about this project is that it keeps the development in scale with the neighborhood. And you know, I think the neighbors are going to be really appreciative of something like this rather than a newer development where we come in and demo the existing structures.
Attorney Blank, can you go back to that drawing you just had up? I have two questions about it. On the parking, again, I know you're not asking to combine the two. But if you were to put these two buildings together in terms of the number of units, how many parking spaces would be required?
So for 132, we've got three, they're not legal. Well, there's three units, zero parking, five units, six and a half is seven. On 138, Kevin, do you know how many units are approved there?
We are actually currently working with Mr. Kleppen on that, I believe.
Does that mean that you'll be coming before us on that property as well at some point?
No, I'm sorry, Mr. Sherman, that was not what I was trying to insinuate. You know, there's many legacy properties that had approved site plans at one point in time that may not have gelled with the existing regulations. So we were asked by Mr. Kleppen to, I believe, decommission one unit there because it became evident that a site plan only supported, I believe, the seven units as an existing nonconformity. So there are, I believe, seven legal units there, only six legal spaces. But again, we're adding two, so it's a net positive and net gain.
Again, I'm rather slow. We've got, we've got two buildings. What is the requirement for number of parking spaces for those two buildings?
Well, I think, you know, 132 Flax is what is before you tonight. And 138, I don't believe, you know, necessarily is within the context of the application from.
Well, not necessarily, but there was some implication that you might be able to use a parking space over there.
Mr. Chairman, if I could probably jump in. So the, between the two, the five and then the seven on the other site, if you round it up, would be 16 required spaces.
And how many are there?
I believe they are going to end up with, between the two sites, 14.
That's correct.
So between, again, it means there's a deficit of two parking spaces. Although I suspect we, we can't really talk in any detail about the other property because it's not before us this evening.
And Mr. Chairman, I mean, there's, I think it would be accurate to say that between the two properties, there are, there would be two parking spaces less than what is currently required under the zoning regulations, which is different than saying, in my view, there's quota deficit, right? Because the 138 is not required to have those parking spaces because it's pre-existing.
Right, right. I don't, I don't disagree. I'm just trying to understand the project better. If I could also, the second, the second question I had relates to the amenities. And again, I bring it up only because you brought it up. Otherwise, I wouldn't have even mentioned it. And my question would be, again, if we, if we're looking at both buildings, what is the amenity space requirement for those two buildings? Because again, you've said that people from the one building can use some of the amenities at the other. And I'm wondering if that's, in terms of our regulations, whether that's truly an advantage.
So we are not, nothing in our application materials utilizes the amenity space at 138 Flax Hill for this project. And we're not asking for that to be a requirement or that it's of an approval because they are, we haven't calculated, I don't believe we've calculated all of the spaces, and we're not proposing to merge the lots. We are proposing a joint easement. It's just anecdotally that we do intend to allow these tenants to use the recreation area at 138 Flax Hill. And I don't know if that's good enough for you, Mr. Chair, but.
Well, it's just that, having said that, it seems to me a fair question for me to ask about the combined amenity spaces, that's all. Again, I know we can't consider it in terms of reaching a decision. I'm sorry, please, continue.
Yeah, do we have, so for, and you can see, Mr. Chair, on the recreation area, the amenity space that we were just referring to, so 138, it's got 218 square feet per unit, 200 is required.
Right.
It actually increases, Adam.
Increase, yeah. Again, that's what's there now. This is what's increases. You had a 253. And that was with eight units too, right, Kevin?
I believe, yes. So that would be even higher.
Yeah, it's going to be closer to 300 square feet a unit.
Yeah, which between the two, I suspect would get us to 200 on both sides. Theoretically.
Okay, you've answered my question. Thank you.
All right, I don't know if there, if there are other questions, we're happy to answer them. Otherwise, we would just preserve our right to respond after the public comment.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the commission members at this point?
I would like to make a comment, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Adam, I was thinking to myself during your presentation that what made this undersized lot really work well was the ownership of the lot next door. And I was going to ask you if you were planning on any kind of permanent easements that were going to run back and forth between these properties. But I guess the answer is no.
Well, we are, we are, and I believe in the draft conditions, if there were to be an approval of the project, there would be a reciprocal easement for ingress and egress. We've not yet, there's nothing, nothing else is, I'll say, proposed by us this evening. That being said, there is a little bit of work to be done on the property next door. And it may well be that the applicant merges the lots or creates easements, or they may not. They're not quite that far yet in figuring out what's the best for them. But they recognize, obviously, that there's certainly a benefit to the sort of shared recreation area for their tenants and having this single access point for the driveway. So I don't know if it will always stay in single ownership, but that is their plan. They buy them, they fix them, and they hold them.
Well, I just, I feel like Marcella's questions in the beginning were valid. And I certainly think our chairman's question was valid based on your presentation. I'm not saying it's going to sway my vote one way or another yet, but it really did look a lot better when we were talking about the shared amenities. That's all for me.
Anything else before we open it up to the public? All right, if not, Brian, can you explain if anybody from the public wants to comment on this, how they do that?
Sure. So if anyone from the public would like to speak on this application, you could just use the raise your hand tool, and then I will allow you to speak. The raise your hand feature is right at the bottom of your screen if you hover over everyone's faces. Not seeing anybody, Lou.
What if they're on a phone? Would it work the same?
No one's on the phone. They're all on a computer.
Okay. Why don't you ask just one more time before we move on?
Sure. So if anyone from the public would like to speak on this application.
There you go.
That was support, I think, wasn't it?
All right. Okay, it appears no one from the public wishes to speak on this. I'll turn it back to Attorney Blank.
Yeah, just in rebuttal, just a couple of points. If the condition, if the commission deems it integral to an approval, we would be okay with a condition that the that the recreation areas be shared between the two parcels. And I would also just point out, in the existing building right now, there are seven bedrooms. In the to-be-increased number of units from three to five, there would be six bedrooms. So the bedroom count actually decreases. And with that, I think, I hope that you'll approve both the tax change and the special permit this evening. Thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Adam, could I just make a couple other quick points?
Sure, go ahead.
Sure, thank you. I just wanted to remind the commission that, you know, a couple of other things that we're doing to enhance this site is creating vehicular and pedestrian safety by bringing the site up to current code requirements for parking and roadways. Those requirements are not existing on the site today. These are improvements we will be making. The building will also be safer with a sprinkler system. We're creating the rec area where zero exists today. And there's a greatly improved street frontage for Flax Hill. Again, a net improvement and a continuation of our commitment to the Flax Hill community. Thank you again for your time this evening. As always, we appreciate your input and your consideration.
Thank you.
And then Michelle, I don't know if you had the planning commission recommendation, if you want to pull that up.
It'll pop up?
Yeah, we can, we can see it.
This is the memo to you guys from the resolution from planning. So I'm not sure if Secretary Ms. Wells wants to read this into the record.
Galen, you want to do your magic?
Galen, I think you're on mute.
Nick and Aubrey, right? So we know what she said.
We can read it in the record, Mr. Chairman, if you want to. Otherwise, we can, yeah, it's up on the screen as well.
Okay, that's fine. It's on the screen. Everyone, please just take a look at it and read it.
I was muted. I'm sorry.
That's all right, Galen. I think we've all had an opportunity to read it.
Oh, Lord. Well, I read part of it.
You sounded great.
Steve, one question I had, just historically, what is the, why would there be a lot limits to be given for these sort of historical easements or historic benefits?
You kind of cut out a few times, Nick. I missed most of what you said.
Oh, sorry. I was trying to, historically, the lot size requirements, why were they there? Why are they there to begin with? Like, what's the, why do you think, what's the general impetus of that? Like, where does that come from?
So you might remember that when we had the first application for this, which was, now I'm drawing a blank on the property right near the hospital, was about two years ago. Thank you, yeah, thank you. The, there was the initial, so that was like the really first test case for this new kind of application. So the idea was if we put some constraints around it, we can see how it's going to work before we broaden it and open it up. So I mean, I think you, we could, you could say that maybe we can critique the architecture more on these projects. We have the ability to hire an outside peer review if you want to go in that direction. But I don't think that there's necessarily a downsized to opening it up. But I don't think that there's necessarily a downsized to opening it up past the, or in removing that minimum area threshold. And I don't think it serves a purpose.
Okay. Okay. Let's hold any further discussion for review and action. I'd like to move on to the second public hearing, 2021-28R. The zoning commission proposed building zone regulations, text amendment to Article 70 to establish a 10-month moratorium on new storage, self-storage, wholesale distribution facilities, including packaged distribution facilities in the industrial number one zone and on new wholesale distribution facilities in the restricted industrial zone. With that, Steve, I'll turn that over to you since this is a zoning commission matter.
Certainly, and I will be significantly shorter than Mr. Blank was in his presentation tonight. No offense to Mr. Blank. We did talk about this a couple of different times. This is kind of an offshoot of an existing moratorium we had put in place on Contractor Yards that we looked at at the onset of the industrial zone study. A couple of things have happened in the interim that there's been a proliferation or an increase in interest in self-storage units and self-storage sites, and they tend to target and look for a lot of times the industrial zone properties. And they are not, while they're on the positive side, they are, they don't generate traffic, but they don't generate any jobs. So I don't think they're the best and highest use of land that we can have in these areas. Secondly, you recall from the Norton application, there was a significant concern about distribution centers and the traffic that those generate, and where should those go? The industrial zone study has some recommendations on both. So we thought it would be a good idea to put a hold on those uses until such time as we could clarify that a little better and get that into the regulations and then hopefully right-size things and then come up with a solid plan on how to deal with those going forward. So that's kind of the impetus for both changes.
Okay, we've, we've had this, excuse me, we've had this before us now for well over a month. We've discussed it a couple of times. But are there any questions, unanswered questions that the commission members have regarding this regulation? All right, if not, then Brian, I'll ask you to open it up to the public.
Sure. So same thing as last time. If anyone would like to speak on this application, you could use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of your screen. There's no one dialed in on a phone, but if you were, you'd hit star nine. We have Diane Lorcella. And if you would like to be on camera, I can make that happen. Just let me know. We'll figure that out.
Good evening. For the record, Diane Lorcella, I am here tonight to
I'm sorry, Diane, can you give us your address, please?
21 Blue Mountain Ridge Road.
Thank you.
In Norwalk, Connecticut. For the record, I'm in support of this current proposed moratorium as a text amendment. And I agree with Mr. Kleppen, it's not the best and highest use of industrial land and restricted industrial, industrial number one and restricted industrial land to have this kind of use upon them. Unfortunately, over the many years I've lived in Norwalk, I have seen use other than industrial, clean industry, use gobbling up our zones, these two zones. So I ask that you approve this text amendment. I also ask, though, that this commission, as part of its recommendation request of the economic development chief and others, that there be a more creative and assertive process to recruit appropriate, more appropriate, and that we keep an open mind with our industrial zone study. I want to make sure that we have a chance to have clean industry and that some of the implicit bias against industry because in the past, in the 70s and the 60s, industry was thought of as both smoky, smelly, and noisy. And the problem is without the city government helping the public and others realize that no industry would be able to get away with that anymore. That industry is good for our economic development, good for well-paying jobs. And so the reason I'm mentioning that is that we should no longer have what happened in the Norton section. Because that is a beautiful piece of industrial land where we should have clean industry, not distribution centers. And the fact, I'm very pleased that you have this text amendment, but I was very surprised that our staff and consultants I have to look into, and I, I know they work hard, but I very much want to see a more creative and assertive process to recruit industry, clean industry, well-paying jobs, including solar panel companies, salad, or green, organic greens, that type of thing can work in Norwalk, and it's considered industrial. So with that, I thank you for bringing this up. I hope you vote yes, and I appreciate all the work you all do.
Thank you.
All right, next is Diane Cece.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the East Norwalk Neighborhood Association Board. We had our board meeting this past Monday night and had this on our agenda. This item, I want to make two points on this. One, I think it goes without saying that everyone on this commission knows that we support the expansion of the moratorium as it relates to distribution and wholesale distribution. Those restrictions that would be for industrial and restricted industrial. No one wants to go through the angst and emotional stress that we had with Norton. I also want to clarify that in addressing this particular moratorium, it seems that some people have interpreted E and N's position as speaking directly to looking to increase public storage and storage facilities in the industrial zones. So I want to clarify that to say our discussion really started as, in response to staff's positioning and putting this in here, that just because this is not the most desirable use in terms of jobs and tax revenue, it doesn't mean that it should be something that should be considered for a moratorium that blocks it out for the next 10 to 12 months. Because in fact, this use is one of the least objectionable that the public identified, as you recall, through all of the angst of the Nordstrom application. It is something that if, if there were an application, we would likely move forward to support it because of the fact that it doesn't have a detrimental impact on the community. But as importantly, it's still a strong market growth for this. And I'm sure your economic development team can speak to the tremendous amount of demand that's in this market now and that they that will be for the foreseeable future. I just saw an article in Forbes, as a matter of fact, where I think it was, it was, Bo Gates, that has made some significant investments in this sector. Either one or more of the, of the national storage facilities. I would say, though, that here's the crux of the concern. So it's not so much that we're falling on our sword to say we have to have these storage facilities. We want you to understand that it's one of the least objectionable applications that could come forward. A lot of our concern is the piecemeal mechanism and when, and how your, how these moratoriums are being presented to the commission and how you're considering them. And I realize hindsight is 2020, and when we go to look at these things, you know, market conditions change, and we say, oops, here's something else we may want to consider. However, I think it means that, that we as a city and staff in the commission now is missing the boat to put a moratorium in that's much more important as we go through the industrial zone and the zoning regulation rewrites. And I'll just remind you again that those are the, some of the as-of-right uses in industrial and restricted industrial. And more importantly, some of these really objectionable special permit uses. I respect Mr. Kleppen. I do. And I know how valuable his opinion and staff's opinion is to all of you when you're making decisions. But I don't agree with him with the premise it says he's not including these in there because of a low likelihood of an application. All that really does is it leaves us very vulnerable for any of these things to be applied tomorrow. And I, and I get it. I mean, if you're looking at if you're looking at risk, you know, benefit or risk analysis on this, there is a low likelihood, but the fact of the matter is some of these other objectionable things could come in tomorrow. Helicopter landing pads, public utility storage facilities. You've heard, heard me rattle off these, these before. Asphalt and concrete plants, motor vehicle storage and junkyards. The list goes on and on, right down to solid waste transfer stations, et cetera. And of course, we probably don't know that there's anything waiting in the wings, and it is unlikely, but they could happen. So I just, we didn't really rally the East Norwalk community this week to say start sending in emails to Mr. Schulman because we're also realistic, we're respectful of your time, and we, and we know where we have to kind of choose our issues here. And this is likely to go through tonight. But we do ask that you consider the fact, a little more holistic view and going forward as we're considering moratoriums and how we look at studies for different zones, that, you know, perhaps there should be a more, you know, overall view of looking at putting in moratoriums on all special permits. Especially because taxpayers are funding these studies, you know? This is a lot of money when you look at the four or five studies that are involved right now that touch these, it's actually five studies right now, touched on the industrial one zones. And so to, you know, to suggest that we're just going to have this moratorium and then like kind of let everything else fly through, doesn't really make sense. And I wondered, Brian Baker, are you actually put up the resolution now where you can't show that until a certain point? It's just I wanted to point out something in the actual resolution itself to you.
See.
If not, it's no big deal. I can just read a piece of it. By the way, I also want to say in terms of storage units, well, 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 Mr. Kleppen, correct, in terms of it doesn't generate a lot of job, they're high-paying jobs, and we're not sure where it falls in line with how that gets assessed for tax revenue and brand less. I would say that in my research, I found that the industry's basically denotes it as being a sector that's recession-proof. So there's a high likelihood that, you know, something, you're not going to have, you know, a change of hands or change of tenants or request for change of use when something goes in. Thank you, Brian. So in the Be It Further Resolved in item number one under chapter three, it says that as a goal of the P O C D is to focus on market opportunities, warehouse logistics, et cetera. And then it says, other light industrial uses that do not have detrimental externalities, not sure if I'm saying that right, on nearby areas. So that, that is definitely a key consideration there of why we think storage facilities probably should stay in there. But even if they do come out, we would suggest that if you're considering these two, these two pieces of the P O C D as specification that this thing maybe needs to go back to the table again, either before you vote on it, or if you had another memorandum moratorium to add in all of those other uses that I've started to read, that I think every commissioner here and staff would agree would be objectionable. I think, I think that's it.
Thank you.
Answer any questions or otherwise, thank you so much.
Anyone else, Brian?
If anyone else from the public, if you'd like to speak, you can use the raise your hand feature. Now, bring you over. It's not look like it, Lou.
Okay, then we will close the hearing and unless commission members have final questions or comments. And I don't see anybody shaking or nodding their heads. So we'll, we'll move on to review and action on pending applications. The first item is 2021-16R/SP132 Flax Hill LLC Proposed Building Zone Regulation Text Amendments. Can we put up a resolution on that to discuss? Brian, is it possible to make it any larger? Oh, that's great. Thank you. In order to get us to discussion, is there a motion on this?
Yes, I make a motion in support of this application.
Okay, so Josh makes a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Michael, was that you seconding?
Yes.
Okay, Michael seconds discussion.
Yeah, I got one point. I mean, I, I really love the fact that they're keeping the buildings, redoing it. I understand you have to add you know, what they're doing to make profit at the end of the day. The one concern I really have is I know we can't look at it outside, but I'm trying to look at it from a, from a real perspective point of view. It's really waving two, two parking spots. I think it was a total of 16 between both parcels, and there's a total of 14 that are there. And I'm just I guess I get hung up on the parking situation.
Frank, I think it's perfectly appropriate to say that you don't approve of the parking, but I don't think we can reference the other building. Even though they mentioned it, and I'm not sure it was appropriate that they did. That's really not the subject of the public hearing. But the fact that they're, they're shy, one parking space, and they're asking for relief, I think that's perfectly appropriate. Other comments?
Mr. Chairman, is this motion that we're talking about right now, is this the tax amendment or is this the application itself?
That's, you know, that's a good question. Brian, are we doing this in one swellfoop or are we doing this as two separate actions?
Michelle's, Michelle's resolution, I think it's two separate actions, one for the text and then one for this.
Well, then I'll revise my motion in support to approve the text amendment.
Okay, I think that's the appropriate way to go. Thank you, Josh. And Michael, you willing?
Second.
Okay, and Michael's willing to second that. So what we're looking at is the text amendment. Any, any comments on the text amendment?
I would just say somehow I became Steve on Zoom.
Right.
Taking that as a sign, at face value, it seems like it's being done for the public good. And given the amount of historical properties in this precedent, I think it's a great outcome.
Other comments from commission members?
I just want to hop on what Marcella said for one moment to say that, especially as we're talking about changing our zoning regulations, especially for historic properties like this one, I think we should think a little broader and see if we can, you know, make these sort of historic preservation eligibility regulations. More consistent and not just what it says basically here for this amendment, which would just be in the D zone.
That's a very, I love that point.
Um, ha, ha, by the way, Josh, when you were interviewed, uh, by our consultants that are doing the rewrite. Did you talk to them at all about this?
You know, I didn't talk about this subject. We actually, um, talked about more on a couple of other subjects, but you know, as we're going through this process and. You know, and as, you know, things come up, they have committed to having an open line of communication. So I'm happy to. I know I spoke with Jessica, so I'm happy to, um, communicate this to her.
Terrific. Uh, any other comments? All right, if not, uh, let's, um, uh, move the question. Uh, Steve, I think we should do a roll call.
Sure. And you just, just on the text amendment.
Yes.
Version of it. So let me see. And, um, just to confirm, I want to just make sure who's seated and not seated.
I am not seated, so I believe you have a full house, so I, I should not, um, I should not be casting a vote.
Okay.
Sure. Okay. Okay, so Mr., so we're voting in favor of the motion, uh, Mr. Rowena.
Yes.
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. Witherspoon?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Mr. Pone?
Yes.
And Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
And that was unanimous.
Okay, good. Uh, let's move on to the second part and, um, that is the special permit. Brian, can, ah, there we go. Uh, can I have a motion on this?
Mr. Chairman, I would vote to approve this motion. Um, I do disagree with you somewhat that. We can't consider the property next door because it was brought. To our attention by the applicant. And it was volunteered by the applicant that they would be willing to. Uh, place an easement on the property to make permanent the. Sharing of the recreation, uh, areas by this, these two buildings. And I don't think that that's inappropriate, especially if they're going to be joined by a common driveway anyway. So I would vote to approve this application with that additional. Uh, provision.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? The motion is made by Richard Rowena.
Second.
And seconded, uh, by Michael Witherspoon. Uh, discussion. I, um. I don't, uh, disagree, uh, with, um. Richard, uh, since it was brought up. Uh, my feeling is it was inappropriate for it to have been brought up in the first place. Uh, but, uh, I'm going to vote against this. And, um, I'm going to, I, 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 I think I made my position pretty clear on this last time we, we discussed it. Um, I'm very supportive of, uh, historic, uh, restoration. Uh, I'm not sure that I see this as historic restoration. It was a Queen Anne building, they're adding back Queen Anne features. Uh, they're not necessarily adding back. The features that existed on this building. There's been no attempt to determine what they were. Uh, and, and, uh, to meet them. Um, so, uh, in my view, they don't meet the standard. Uh, for, um, uh, historic, uh, recreation. Uh, and that's why, uh, I'll be voting against it, although. My sense is, uh, that, um, uh, this is probably, uh, a motion that's going to be approved. Uh, other comments?
Can I make an additional comment?
Sure.
Um, I think. I, I hear what you're saying, Mr. Chairman, about the, the amount of, uh, work that is being done on the preservation aspect of it. But just keeping the building. Um, is important, I believe. I mean, I am. Horrified to drive down East Avenue and see my old building ninety-six East Avenue. That we all voted, um, to add. I don't know how many units to because it was being preserved and, and I don't know what's been preserved. But this is talking about keeping the entire building and even though. It's the, the facade changes are, are minor. The building will still be there and that's important to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I.
I agree with Mr. Rowena. I think that's very important.
I think those are fair points.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm a big fan of the target audience as well for the, uh. For the residences, the missing middle piece, so. I'm generally being supportive of this.
Uh, any other comments before we vote on this? Okay, uh, again, Steve, let's do, let's do a roll call.
Certainly, uh, Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Ms. Sapon?
Yes.
Mr. Witherspoon?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
And Mr. Schulman?
No.
It's six, one in favor.
Okay. Um, let's move on on the agenda.
Due to Mr. Chairman, um, I have to excuse myself. Uh, I sent you, you and Steve an email earlier that I had to, I had a hard stop, so. Oh, no. The public hearing is over, I'm going to, uh. Say goodnight. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you for joining us, Frank.
Okay, thanks, bye.
Uh, twenty dash, uh, twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three SPR MF De Scala. Uh, and company two ninety-five Westport Avenue.
We, you need to, uh, vote on the, the moratorium first and then.
I'm sorry, I completely forgot about it. Thank you. Um, okay. Um, twenty twenty-one dash twenty-eight R zoning commission proposed, uh, building zone regulation text amendment. Uh, is the, there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, Galen.
I'll second.
Moves and Michael seconds. Uh, uh, any discussion? Um. Uh, I, I think I'd like to, uh, say something about Ms. Cece's, uh, comments. Uh, and, um. That is. Her argument seems to be that. Um, because. Um, uh, the, the, um. Um, uh, construction or approval. Uh, of, uh, storage facilities will, will not adversely impact. Uh, a neighborhood. Uh, uh, that should be a reason for, uh, approving them. Uh, I don't, uh, have such a limited view. Uh, of, um, what, what is best for the city. It may well be that in some areas that, uh, these storage facilities, uh, make sense. But I think that, uh, right now. Uh, while, while we're, uh, completing the study. Uh, on the industrial zones, uh, it makes sense, uh, to, uh. Uh, hold off on permitting, uh, uh, their construction within these zones. Um. So I, uh, I certainly, um, uh, support, uh, this resolution.
I agree. I totally support this for this point in time in your juncture where you are with everything.
I agree as well.
Yeah, so do I.
Any other comments? Um, okay, if not. Um, I've lost my place. Do, do we have a motion to approve?
Yes, we do.
Okay. That's fine, uh, then, uh, again, let's do a roll call on.
Okay, Ms. Sapon?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Mr. Witherspoon?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
And Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
That's unanimous.
Okay. Okay, uh, now, now we'll move to twenty dash twenty-one, uh, twenty dash twenty-three, uh, SPR MF De Scala. Two ninety-five Westport Avenue proposed Jimmy John's Restaurant. Um. And I would call upon their representative. Uh, to talk to us, this is. Uh, uh, continuing, uh, discussion and perhaps action on, uh, site plan review.
Good evening, John J. Ryan, uh, at Five Brook Street in Darien, Connecticut, uh, of Council. Uh, to Russo and Rizio and with me as last time are seated slightly off camera to my left. Laying it is the well-known Michael Ante, you know, from Hard to Stay in Never. And also William Roth should be online from Jimmy Johns and Alan Weber, who you all know is the CFO of MF De Scala. If I could actually have the chutzpah to summarize the chairman's remarks last time. At our meeting two weeks ago, uh, Mr. Chairman, you directed us to put our heads together. With the nice folks in the traffic department to see if we could work out. Uh, the issues that were articulated at the meeting last time. Uh, I know you have more things to do, so I'll be succinct and say I think that meeting was productive. I think we have, uh, a resolution that Mr. Cleppen can, uh, summarize for you. But everyone in our end has reviewed it and can live with it and hopes that you act upon it tonight. Because we'd be delighted to have a Jimmy John's actually opening soon. On Westport Avenue, so that there might actually be the need for a traffic officer to come and. Move vehicles around for, uh, an opening, maybe with some balloons and ribbons, but, uh. Seriously, I think we've got this resolved, then I'll defer to Mr. Cleppen and I would encourage if there's any questions or concerns, please let us know.
All right, Steve, why don't we, uh, begin with your putting up the resolution? Um, because the resolution addresses many of the concerns we, we expressed at our last meeting.
Here, give me one second.
Excuse me.
Sorry, I've got too many windows open, so just give me a sec. Okay, can you see that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um. Yeah, so I, I know I sent this out a little late, so I'm hoping everybody had a chance to, um. Skim through this, uh, as was stated by Attorney Ryan, that the applicant worked closely with the folks from. T and P to come up with the, you know, make sure they were okay with the conditions. We also worked through the city's corporation council. To look at some of the items that pertain to the, um. Pertain to the, you know, the right of way issues and pertaining to getting access. To the site, should there not be the remedial, remedial measures that are required in there. Long and the short of it is that, um, you know, staff has been concerned about the queue distance between the drive through. And, uh, Westport Avenue. So the idea is that, um, we understand when, when there's a new business in town. Especially a restaurant, it's something shiny and new and people like to, to go to that and gravitate towards it. So we, we anticipate that there's definitely going to be some. Initial increased traffic where we hope there, there's measures in place to deal with that. Uh, we also have longer term concerns and we've put some, uh, conditions in there that we think address that should that, uh, you know, the worst case scenario arise and that their traffic. Uh, problems persist, and so that's what these conditions hope to address. Um, I did want to point out, and I should do this while we have Attorney Ryan and the applicant here as well. Condition, uh, number twelve does refer back to, um. Any other conditions as opposed by T and P there, and those were referenced in a prior memo. Um, I believe. I'm going to stop share so I can find those while I'm. Talking, but one of those had to do with they, they had requested that there be, uh. Sidewalk improvements, um, implemented. And I believe if I can find the second one. I'll fill you in on what that was.
Steve, you're saying those are, those are in the, in the resolution besides.
No, the, the, the language is, the other conditions imposed by T and P. I'll pull the email up now so you guys can see what those were.
That's ongoing, that could be ongoing, essentially.
Yeah, can you, can you see that?
Can you make it larger, Steve?
I will, yes, I can do that.
That's better.
Also, the city is saying they would put a, they'll put the. The crosswalk there, okay.
Yes, I, I think how they kind of like, like positioned it would be that, you know, we'll. Partner with the applicant on, um, improving pedestrian connectivity to the site and which helps hopefully helps the business as well as helps, uh. Uh, residents in the area. So that's what number one refers to.
Yeah, that back area will pick, give them the tougher rivers.
Yeah, and I, I didn't know if the applicant, I know they've seen this prior, but I don't know if they. Uh, that this, like I said, this, this specific language wasn't in the resolution, but this is what, uh, T and P sent me this afternoon.
Hey, Steve, it's, uh, it's Alan Weber, um. What we discussed at T and P was that it would go in as one application to the states since it's in the state right away in this, and. And the city would do that and we would then pay for our proportionate share of. The sidewalk, though, was being done, but the city was going to. Undertake to get it approved and do it. Um, they, I'm, I'm not on a screen where I can see the full thing, so I just wanted to make sure that that point is. Is either clear or at least understood.
As paragraph. Yeah. I don't think that, that differs for what's in the conditions.
Alan, based on your, uh, e- experience, um. Typically, how long would it take, um, to get this approved by the state?
I don't know, that's more of a city in Norwalk thing for the, for the sidewalks. Not the, not the access point that we're talking about over by Jimmy, Jimmy Johns, but the sidewalk. For the other side, um, that's going towards, you know, Bender and so on.
Right.
I, I don't know, we haven't, we haven't had to do that, so. I think the city can answer that better than I can.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, Steve, you want to put up that resolution again, please?
Sure.
Because the res- the resolution is, uh, uh, key here. None. The, the, the concerns we expressed at the last meeting, uh, still exist, but, um. This approval, um, addresses, uh, them. Uh, and, um, uh, gives the city. Uh, the, um, uh, opportunity to make sure that, uh. Uh, this doesn't become an attractive nuisance.
Let me know if you need me to scroll down or, or you can't see.
Yeah, I think I'm ready to read the rest of it again. Um, if you, if you can scroll so that we can see six and above or six and below. Let me just draw your attention to eight. Failure to adhere to any of the requirements of conditions. Five and or six may result of the bond and completion of the work by the city. Can I have a motion to approve this?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Richard's made the motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, and Galen seconds. Discussion?
I would just like to say, when I did read this resolution this afternoon, I was astounded at how thorough and how it covered, as Mr. Chairman pointed out already, every issue that we raised at the last meeting. And tonight, I'm astounded that after all these years, Attorney Ryan has recognized that sometimes lessons more. Thank you.
I'll always be delighted to take that as a compliment from you.
It was.
I just note that my beard has gone gray a lot faster than his, so I'm suspicious about his coloring.
Well, I would I would agree that staff has has done a fine job here of addressing our concerns and working working with the applicant to get this project going forward.
Yeah, I'll pass that along to the legal office in TNP because they did the heavy lift, so I'll let them know.
That, please do. Any further comments? All right, if not, let's do a roll call on this. Again, this is a not a special permit, doesn't require a public hearing, it's just a site plan review.
Okay, Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Sapon?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Witherspoon?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
And Mr. Scholman?
Yes.
That's unanimous.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, review and action on new applications. We have a site plan review. Twenty twenty-one dash nineteen SPR High Street LLC, forty-three, forty to forty-seven High Street. Construct two-unit addition to existing multifamily dwelling report and recommend action. We have a review of this by Mr. Andreopoulos.
So they did, had to go to redevelopment before it came to you guys, so redevelopment conducted a third-party architectural review.
Right.
That Andreopoulos did, ultimately leading to redevelopment, approving the project, and now it is before you, just as a kind of regular site plan review application.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Any questions about the project? We've we've heard from these folks before. Going all the way back to the two Corvettes when they were trying to cut a deal with another developer. I don't see any smiles, so I don't think anybody else other than me remembers that. Steve, do can you put up the resolution? Okay, is there someone here representing the applicant?
Lyle Fischel, architect, Fischel Architecture, thirty-six Givens Avenue. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, well, it's pretty basic. We are, if I can share, well, you want to keep the resolution up there, or I can share my.
Oh, that's okay. You can put your plans up.
Can everybody see that?
No, no, we can't.
Okay, so.
Just try again, Lyle, I think it was because I was sharing.
Okay. So how's that?
Nope, still not not seeing it.
Okay.
Are you trying to get the engineering up? Lyle, I can pull that up.
Yeah, no, I was going to show the architecturals. I have them up, but I don't know why they aren't coming up. If I hit share, let's see how that works. It's not it's not reacting the way I'd like to see it react.
I can pull up the exteriors for you.
There we go.
There you go.
Okay, so basically, the property is, it's between forty-three and forty-five High Street. I'm not sure what number the post office but it uses an existing R2 use and existing R2 use here. We're just kind of connecting the difference between them with a single bedroom unit here on the first floor and a two-bedroom unit on the second floor. Basically, a simple roof design, and he designed to try to keep with the the format and the design of the neighborhood and of this building that we've created, which is now the three buildings connected to one. So this would be the two front doors. Have a little window up there. This is west elevation. All the materials are to match what's existing and what has already been done on this site. Redevelopment has gone through and made some notations, save a more notations that were concerned about the site. Very little about the architecture. They understood that, you know, we are dealing with what we have existing on the site. So I'd be willing to answer any questions anybody might have. Brian probably got some site plans. I don't have those readily available, so. You.
Questions from commission members? I mean, this this is a pretty straight straightforward project.
Very straightforward.
Does he, is a public hearing even necessary for this kind of application, or is this something that we can say for like our next meeting?
This is a site plan review. We have the right to hold a public hearing. I think it would be a waste of everyone's time to to put them and ourselves through that.
I would agree with that wholeheartedly.
All right, Steve, should put up the resolution again, please. Thank you. Is there a motion to to approve the resolution?
Motion to approve.
Okay, Josh has made a motion, and who seconded?
I'll second.
Okay, and Richard seconds. Any further discussion? Okay, if not, call the question. Steve, let's do a roll call.
Sure, Ms. Wells?
Okay, unmute myself for this, yes.
Mr. Witherspoon?
Yes.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Ms. Sapon?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
And Mr. Scholman?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fischel.
Thank you.
Next, twenty twenty-one dash thirty-one STLJ LLC and one hundred Westport Avenue LLC, one twenty-six Westport Avenue, AKA eighty and one hundred Westport Avenue. Stu Leonard's modification to existing special permit. And who is representing Stu Leonard's?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Liz Suchi.
Good. And where are we tonight?
Same place as last time. It's the hills above Positano.
Okay.
I'll make sure I change the background for the next meeting. So thank you for taking the time to have this matter before you this evening. We appreciate the time that you spend so far, and we hope to be brief. For the record, my name is Liz Suchi. I'm a partner at the law firm of Carmody, Torrance, Sandac and Hennessy, and I represent the applicants and owner of the property, which we'll just colloquially call Stu Leonard's, since that's what everyone knows it as. Also on the line this evening is Doug Hempstead and Bruce Kennedy. They're both of Stu Leonard's. Ray Sullivan and Jonathan Smansky of Sullivan Architectural Group, Jim Rotundo of Godfrey Hoffman and Hodge, civil engineer, and Neil Alinsky of SLR Consulting. He is the project traffic engineer.
I thought Mr. Hempstead is retired.
Kind of, sort of, not really. I think Mr. Hempstead works a limited number of hours each week, but he is still part and parcel of the Stu Leonard's organization, and rightfully so, since he has such history and background of it. The property that we're talking about is at one hundred Westport Avenue, that all of you know is the Stu Leonard's store. It's in the business number two zone. Right now, there's the hundred and thirty thousand square foot grocery store that has retail warehouse processing off the storage kitchen, outdoor grill and dining, outdoor retail sales and other uses. The acreage is about five point nine five acres, and on the site is just over four hundred parking spaces. Across the street, there are two other lots owned by STLJ, where there are combined about a hundred additional parking spaces, and those spaces are typically used for staff. Various permits have been issued since the store was open, most recently from nineteen ninety-five current, which include the hoedown grill and the outdoor tent and propane tank and some other uses on the site. The proposal before you is to modify the prior approvals to allow us to, excuse me, permanently enclose within the building the uses, many of the uses that you see outside today. A similar application was submitted and approved in two thousand and eight, in fact, special permit application to construct an eighteen thousand square foot addition to house all of these outdoor activities. That application is number ten dash OAS. Extensions were granted over time, but it was never implemented. So we're back before you to modify the prior approvals, the prior special permits, and to just modify the conditions that exist today to allow us to once again enclose out an eleven thousand square foot building and relocate some of those outdoor and exterior activities and uses that currently exist today. It would not increase the the number of parking spaces required. That's all been calculated into the existing number. It's not new or expanded space, but a much improved permanent use of existing space that is currently dedicated to these uses. So if all is approved by this agency and all the other agencies to whom the application has been referred, it would bring the total square footage of the site to about a hundred and forty thousand square feet of building area. To date, the sign-offs received are from Fire, Health, WPCA, and the first taxing district border department. We received comments, I believe, on Tuesday from the Department of Public Works, and those are under review. And just last night before six P M., we received some comments from TNP, and those have been shared with my client, excuse me, and its traffic engineers, and we are working on those comments and don't anticipate there be there will be many issues with implementing them and working with TNP to come to a resolution of the comments and questions that they raised, some of which would require State Traffic Authority approval. At this point, if you would indulge me, I'd like to have Mr. Sullivan come on the line and screen-share his plans, so you can get a sense of what exists and what is proposed graphically. Since I think that'd be an easier way to understand what we're what we'd like to do and how you'll see that it's it's really very similar to what exists today, but would be an enclosed structure. After Mr. Sullivan, I'd like Neil Alinsky of SLR, our traffic consultant, to walk you through the traffic analysis that was undertaken and to respond to some of the comments raised by TNP. And lastly, if you would like, Jim Rotundo is on the line of Godfrey GHH, and he can answer any questions from site plan and drainage and the like. So at this point, if Jim.
Yes, it's me, Liz.
Mom, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. Liz, can you hear me all right? Okay, great. So thanks, Liz. Good evening, members of the commission. If I click screen share, do I have control of the screen? Let me just.
Yep, go ahead.
Ray, Ray, can you identify yourself?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Lou. Ray Sullivan of the Sullivan Architectural Group. We're located at one fifty-five Broad Street in Milford, Connecticut. So, you know, as I click screen share, it goes to a whiteboard, doesn't go to my screen, so.
I hit that the plans open whether it's PDF or however you have it.
Can you see those?
No.
Okay, so, yeah, I'm trying to share my screen so I can put that up. But every time I click the screen, instead of going to my screen, it goes to a whiteboard.
I can, there you go.
There we go.
Okay, so.
Oh, looks like we've got the whiteboard.
Ray, you just pulled up the architectural plans?
Yes, and really just a limited portion.
All right, I'll pull up the full set, and you can just tell me where to go. I can find.
Is it possible to send us the screen share, the share screen over to me?
Not that I've been able to figure out.
All right, so you know, if we could, you know, the problem could be some of the, some of our renderings, you know, are probably not in this package, but if could you continue to scroll down and hit the architectural drawings? Okay. I actually, I'm sorry, keep going, keep going. That's that's the old version. Okay, I'm sorry, just go back one more, one more. So what's what you see in front of you is the Stu Leonard's store, the crosshatched area in front. You know, if you're, the crosshatched area in front is the is the proposed addition. To the left is a farmer's market. To the right is the garden center. That, you know, there will be outdoor sales area that dotted line in between is intended to be a tent, and there's going to be trellis further down. If you could scroll to the next one, just for a second, the next screen. And that crosshatched area up in front is is a little over two thousand square feet of, you know, additional office area. One thing I'll point out while this screen is up is one of the things we're doing besides cleaning up the front is we're actually enhancing accessibility. Right now, the elevator that is in the building is back in the kitchen. The main stair, if somebody walks in and tries to go up to see the receptionist is in that circle, that silo, and it's a circular stair. So you'll notice to the right, there's a new elevator, there's a new stairway. So there'll be a hundred percent, you know, accessibility, you know, you know, up to the second floor and all that office area. So could you just scroll to the next image, please? So so that's just a, you know, slightly enlarged, you know, depiction of the same. So what what, yeah, could you just go out just a little bit, because I just want to be able to touch the the or I mean, make it slightly smaller? Yeah, perfect. So what we, you know, what we have in all our other stores is we have this main entryway, which we call the farmer's market. And and, you know, it forms both those. It's a it's a it's a flexible sales area, you know, which changes seasonally, you know, which cases fruits and vegetables there. Now there's mums and pumpkins in the fall, so on and so forth. And it, you know, forms the main entry into the building. You know, right now, there is a farmer's market, but the farmer's market is a tent. You know, those products are sold there. You know, there's a hoedown where where food is prepared for sale. There's a sitting area. There is that's underneath the tent. There's what we call the hoop house. There's a, you know, which is a plastic framed greenhouse. There's a trellis. There's another tent. And so what we have is we've got all these these structures And so what we have is we've got all these, these structures, um, and what we're trying to do is just enhance the shopping experience and bring you through this new main entryway. Um, so that, you know, all these little parts and pieces will go away, and the front of the building will be, you know, greatly cleaned up in, 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 in our mind. Uh, another thing that will happen is you'll see an arrow where you enter, uh, you know, head on or, or in the side into this farmer's market. So you'll, you'll weave through that area. It'll be a double-story space, a lot of high glass if we can pick up the renderings. Um, uh, that, you know, in, in the future, you know, if, if approved, you know, we're gonna do some work on the bakery and the, and the front end portion, but you'll see an arrow leaving to the left so that when you come out of the registers, you'll be exiting there. So right now, uh, you know, be- besides accessibility improvements, you know, uh, you know, to the second floor, you know, we're actually separating the entrance and the exit. You know, right now, everybody's coming in and out the same entrance. You know, you go and, you know, you're going through that farmer's market tent, you know, you're, you're exiting out and, you know, going to, you know, past the ice cream department. And, uh, so, so, so now, now we're going to separate them. So we, you know, we think that's actually another, you know, enhanced cleanup of the, of the circulation in, you know, in the, in the site. Um, so to, to the right crosshedge area is a, is a garden center. So when, when we put these two spaces together, we're adding on approximately, uh, ten thousand, you know, five hundred and seventy-one square feet, uh, you know, plus, you know, two hundred, and two thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight on the second floor. Uh, you know, just by comparison, the previous approved project, um, you know, was, you know, was, was approved for, for just shy of twenty-five thousand additional square feet. So, you know, we're really half of what the previous approval was.
Is the goal of the garden center there going to be replacing what pops up from time to time in the seasonal extension?
Yes. So, so the, 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 the intention is that the, um, is that there would be a tent, a seasonal tent in between the two structures. Um, there's right now a trellis area where the garden center is. Uh, you know, that, that's going to move down sheet if we get to a site plan. And then the, um, and, but, 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 but to your point, yes, um, you know, the, 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 the point is to take all these smaller seasonal multi-material structures and, 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 and do, uh, you know, you know, you know, a well-proportioned, attractive, well-lit, you know, permanent structure, and that's, that's the intention.
And Ray, why, uh, why has Stu Leonard chosen to downsize, uh, the, uh, extension?
Well, it's, it's, uh, the, the, um, uh, a, a, a lot of the extension, Lou, was, uh, you know, first of all, in the, uh, in the second floor, they were, they were, they were greatly enhancing their, uh, office area. Um, and, and, uh, in the original, what you see here between the Stu Leonard's sign, uh, you know, for the main entryway and what we're calling the garden center, that was all one connected space. So we had more uh, uh, food prep. We had an, an area to eat. You know, we had some transitional areas and, um, you know, but, you know, between COVID and other things that, you know, uh, you know, the customer, customers are acting a little bit differently. We don't need the same spaces. And we're not really, uh, it's not like we're losing space, Lou. We, we are, uh, we have outdoor space. So, uh, what happens is the area, you know, we're not touching the parking lot. Uh, when we look at a site plan, there's a curved line that kind, kind of defend, that defines the, you know, the edge of the sales area, be it building or outdoor sales area. So that area is exactly the same. So as the building itself got smaller, you know, there's, there's a little bit more outdoor sales area. So, you know, you know, during the winter months, you know, there'll be a loss of space. Uh, you know, but typically, you know, nine, ten months out of the year, you know, we'll have active outdoor space. Uh, but, but, you know, we've been able to kind of simplify the addition and, uh, uh, in, 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 in work it a little bit better on the site. So, uh, the, the only thing I'd love to be able to do is we've got these high-quality renderings that, uh, you know, we sent them over independently. Again, if I could share my screen, I could bring them up.
Brian, if you could possibly share, share those?
Yeah, let me get them. Just loading them right now.
Thank you.
Great. So, so that, that's the same entrance, uh, in, in, you know, into the facility, that, you know, the, the current entrance into the building right now is to the left of that silo you see on the left. You know, actually, there's a tree kind of in the foreground that's kind of covering where the current, current entrance is. But, but, you know, you, you, you depict a yellow line that curves in front of the new entryway, in front of the tent, in front of the garden center. You know, everything on the store side of that line, uh, uh, is what we're working within, if what exists now. Everything on the other side of that line is parking lot, and we're not changing it. Uh, if you could go to the next. So, um, that's just a little bit more of a, of a, a head-on image when, when, when we, when we, I, you know, I think that this, this, uh, you know, most people know Stu's, but, but, you know, for those who don't, a lot of people moved out of the city, you know, that, you know, this becomes a much more identifiable entrance, whereas over time, as the store grew, you know, the entrances, you know, for this facility is actually really quite small and, you know, and tucked in a corner.
And just, and, and just to confirm, and I guess just so I understand what I'm looking at, that main entrance now where it says Stu Leonard's, is that further in front of like where the tent starts currently and the current entrance? Or is that just a formal structure in the same location, or is it actually further into the parking lot?
And so, so that, that, that yellow line, which, you know, in front, which, which kind of defines the traffic aisle and traffic movement and, and parking, that exists now, uh, you know, there's, you know, there's no building beyond that line, um, now, and, 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 and no, there, there'll be no building there. The, the face of that building, you know, is probably approximately where that small hoedown structure is, you know.
Okay, and the hoedown structure being the striped tent in the middle, is that correct?
No, there's a, there's a, there's a small, I want to say sixteen by sixteen structure that, you know, you go there seasonally, they're cooking hot dogs, hamburgers, you know, I mean.
I'm sorry, I, I understand what you're saying now. Okay.
Yeah. So, so the, the point is that, that yellow line is defining the area that Stu is using, you know, retail-wise now, and whatever we're doing, what we're trying to do is really enhance the entrance, kind of clean up all those multiple structures, you know, e- even, even if it's the same, even if they're tents, you know, that, you know, the tents fade over time, they're not the, the exact same color. So we're just trying to clean up the whole entry to this, to the, to the, to the store, make the entry a little bit more dominant and, and kind of simplify the structures around. So if we could go to the next, just a couple, or so that, so that, you know, that's a good depiction. So there, here's an aerial. So that, that curved line, you know, is kind of the delineation between, you know, where, you know, vehicles are and where people and shopping exist, so that, um, again, we're, you know, we're on the, on the inside of that line. Now we're staying on the inside of that line. Um, anything on the outside of that line, all that traffic, you know, is exactly the same. So, you know, here you see the, the, you know, the entrance, um, you know, you see the tent, the garden center and, uh, the garden center structure, and then it just o- out of the viewport, you know, you, you'll, if you could scroll down just a little bit, uh, yeah, if you just keep going down. Well, actually, if, if, this is, this is shop on the other side of the parking lot, you, you, if you go to the next image, which I think should be the last. Yeah, okay, so that's what I was trying to get to is, is that, you know, there, there, there is a trellis out there now. We're gonna, you know, we're gonna, you know, build a new one. That, that's where the kind of the garden center will be, the out, the outdoor flower area.
And you guys aren't getting rid of the hoedown, or you're just moving it into the permanent structures at the, the store?
Well, that, you know, the, 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 the way, the, you know, the way, uh, uh, you know, and, and, you know, with, with, with COVID, and I'm not sure when we're gonna kind of come out of it, you know, perception-wise, uh, you know, people are eating different, you know, and so, so that, you know, there, there, there are, you know, you know, there are more prepared foods on the inside rather than everybody, you know, picking their own at the hot and cold salad bar like they used to do with the hoedown. So, yes, there will be areas to, to, to purchase food and to, 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 uh, consume the food there on the premises. Uh, it's, it's reduced from, from the old days.
Most important, not getting rid of the ice cream, I hope.
No, 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 we're gonna enhance the ice.
That's against the law.
Right, I think, I think, yeah, we'll put that in a condition.
But let me ask you a question, um, just quickly about the, the garden center itself. I see again, it's within the confines of the yellow line. Um, for the off-season, is the, does this whole thing get tented in the winter, or is this just sort of come down and it's just not, you know, just sort of not in use in the off-season? Like, will there be a garden center twelve months a year?
There, there, there'll be a garden center twelve months a year, but now, you know, so now instead of putting up tents or that plastic greenhouse that's out there and, and, you know, kind of, you know, other things that happened, you know, now we have a permanent structure. So that, like, for instance, at Christmas time, you know, you're, you're buying Christmas trees outside, but, but, you know, you know, a lot of those accessories will be sold inside that, that garden center structure you see with those overhead garage doors.
Um, I'm sorry, the overhead garage doors, oh, here, I, I say, okay. So that's going to be the permanent, it's essentially a whatever you want it to be. You know, it's adaptable.
It's, 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 it's our, it's our garden center. So, so, uh, you know, it's just that, um, uh, again, we're taking some of these multiple structures away and making one nicer, more permanent.
Right.
And so, so that's not coming down. The trellis isn't coming down. In the wintertime, you know, where the flowers are, there'll be Christmas trees, you know, instead of flowers. It'll, it'll be like it always has been, but, you know, we think, um, uh, cleaned up and, and enhanced. So, oh, you know, a- as, as Liz mentioned, you know, uh, it was previously approved. Uh, I think she mentioned the gross square footage of the, of, of the proposed facility would be a hundred and forty thousand square feet. Uh, the, the, as, as it was previously approved, it was a hundred and forty-eight thousand square feet. So it, it was a little bit bigger, but, but, you know, as we discussed, there's, there's, uh, a little, little less ground floor addition, uh, less office area being added to the second floor. Uh, and the, uh, open area that's not being used for building will be used for outdoor sales. So it's kind of an even swap. So it's almost the same thing. So that's all I have unless there's any questions.
Any other questions for Ray? Okay.
Time of, assuming this is approved, um, what is your feeling in terms of construction schedule? How long will it take to make these kinds of improvements? Will there be a disruption to customers?
The, I, the anticipation, excuse me, Ray, let me, I'll start, and then you can correct me when I go astray. But the anticipation would be as, as soon as approvals could be secured, we would then come in for the formal zoning permit, secure building permits and start construction quickly. And of, of course, the disruption to customers would have to be managed as best we can so that it is as limited as possible. But Ray, perhaps you have some more information on how that's going to be managed?
Well, the, the, uh, well, first of all, it depends on whether or not Doug Stages retired or not, but, you know, you know, once we, once we get that, the, um, uh, you know, the, 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 the intention would be that, that the downtime in the store is right after the holidays. So if, if we could start construction, uh, uh, January second, we, you know, we would. So, um, uh, so, you know, you know, uh, I, I can't say definitively we are going to do that, but that would be an ideal plan to be able to get the frame up and before the spring hits, be able to clean up the site. So there, there will be disruption. Um, you know, the, um, uh, you know, you know, we, you know, we plan to do some small improvements on the inside. Right now, when you, when you enter the store, the, uh, you, the aisle goes through the bakery. This bakery on the left, this bakery on the right. So we're going to move the bakery all to one side. You know, we're gonna, uh, bring the, you know, ice cream and coffee together on the inside. You know, I think we're going to improve that flow. We're going to improve the exiting. Uh, so, you know, it's not a, it's not an easy thing to, you know, you know, it sounds like building a new bridge on a busy road, you know, we've got to figure it out. But, but our slow time is January, February, March, and, and that's our intention.
Any other questions of Ray? If not, may I ask Neil Alinsky to unmute and provide his information about the analysis on traffic and respond to the comments of T M P?
Sure thing, sure thing. Uh, for the record, Neil Alinsky with SLR Consulting. We have offices in New Haven and Cheshire and Glastonbury. So, um, we're the traffic engineers on the project. Um, based on what you've heard, we, we did some initial discussions. We, we asked the state traffic folks what they thought about whether or not this might increase traffic or not. We discussed early on with the city T M P folks. We all pretty much agreed, it's really not expected to generate, this proposed development is really not expected to generate new traffic that would be added to the, to the roadways. So based on a, based on that and early discussions we had back, I want to say in March, with, uh, I think Garrett and Jim at, uh, T M P, they said, well, why don't you just look at, um, look at the existing conditions out there. So that's what we did. We looked at, we did some traffic counts of three of the, uh, signals right there on Route One. We looked at some of the, the state's crash history data out there. We, we basically documented it, and just, just yesterday, actually, I think twenty-four hours ago roughly, we got actual review comments back from traffic department. Again, they, they agreed that this really isn't expected to generate new traffic, but there are some, uh, there were some pedestrian crashes out there. So the focus really is on safety of, really on, put it, a safety of pedestrians crossing Route One out there. Um, so we got, actually, I could share my screen. Uh, Garrett at T M P, see if I could get it. He put together a pretty concise map of, uh, what, uh, basically improvements that, uh, the city wants. And interestingly, these are all state roadways, so we're gonna have to, and I'll get to it, we're gonna have to discuss these with the Connecticut DOT. But as you, I'm not sure if you can see my cursor, but at three signals at the Southernly Drive, driveway, at the main driveway opposite and at, uh, Dry Hill, and at the signal actually at George, the city wants, um, they want pedestrian signal, pedestrian crosswalk, um. They want infrastructure improvements to, uh, basically upgrade these singles. Now, actually, just two days ago, sort of serendipitously, I suppose, found out there is a new state Connecticut DOT state project that is just starting to, from what I understand, and going to be finding out more soon, that, uh, they're going to be upgrading some of the existing signal equipment out there anyways. It's quite interesting. So I think what our next step is, is to discuss with the Connecticut DOT, bring in the, the city, um, and, uh, see if we can get these incorporated into the state project, which would make a lot of sense to me. I think, like I mentioned, from what I understand, is a pretty new state project. When we talked to Jim and Garrett at T M P, a couple of days ago, they had not even heard about this, this from the state, so it's a pretty new state project. So that's where we're at. Um, it's also, you know, this is new, very fresh, the specific comments, we're still kind of digesting them. But we, we're gonna have a discussion pretty soon with the Connecticut DOT, uh, bringing in the city to, uh, see, see what makes sense in terms of, uh, how, what of these improvements can be incorporated into the state project? And also what an appropriate fair share might be if Stu's has to contribute to any of these improvements. Um, that's pretty much where we're at. Um, this, you know, I'm not sure if everybody realizes, the Stu Leonard's is, has an existing state traffic commission. Now it's called the State Traffic Administration Certificate. They've had approvals in the past, and this current uh, building enclosure is going to, is going to require another, uh, basically an administrative approval from the Office of State Traffic Administration. So that's another mechanism to bring all these parties together to talk about what we're, what you're seeing in front of you in terms of the, the the needs for the community and what the city wants in terms of pedestrian safety. So without going into any more details and blabbering on, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Neil, if I may just ask, what is the, um, O S T process and timeline for an A D administrative decision? When that process would start and generally, how long would it take for those on the commission that may not be familiar?
Right. So the, the state traffic O S T process can go somewhat concurrent with the city approval process, but it has to lag behind at least a little bit, because these, uh, O S T will not approve something until the uh, local municipal zoning or planning and zoning, um, body has approved it first. So we can, we're, we're planning to put together our application to O S T for that state-level approval in the next week or two. And that, they'll, they will begin their review and, um, and that, uh, that could go, you know, the review could go on for three, just five months. So, you know, the folks up at the state, great people, but they do take their time sometimes. But that's, uh, that is going to be another approval that we're gonna need, and which we we're going to be gearing up to make an application on pretty soon.
That's another reason why, Mr. Chair and members of the commission, that if there is, um, uh, a consensus to move this matter forward, and if it could be reached this evening, that would allow Neil to then be able to file formally with O S T, since the local approval would be granted. And it would give us the opportunity not only to work with O S T, but also with T M P over the next few months during the time period that Ray established. over the next few months during the time period that Ray established that um, looking to perhaps be ready to go after the Jan, December, January holiday season, if everything falls together neatly. Any other question?
Yeah, I I just quickly, um, Neil, I I mean, it's part of the T M P report, there were some pictures here toward the back regarding part of the driveway. I assume that is going to be, I know that Ray was talking about that improvements that the plan would be that improvements start in January or so. Uh, would improving those, first of all, do you, you know, do you intend to improve these driveways? And second, do you intend to do so on that same timeline? Because I don't think this is the state road at this point. I think this is Stu's property, right?
Right, right. I don't have the, the property lines are not shown on here. But um, our civil engineer might be better able to speak to this, but I believe we are anticipating some planning to do some improvements to these driveways already as part of the project. Um, I believe we've al, we've also gotten some Public Works comments about um, needing to put new curbing up on George Avenue frontage up there. I might be misspeaking a bit, but that's obviously not a state.
Uh, Gregory Avenue.
Gregory, yes.
Actually, I believe that Stu's has a permit from D P W to do some paving and restriping. But given all the uh, issues with COVID, that has been somewhat delayed. So that is certainly part of uh, the process, not only to make the 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 front of the store and the interior and the and the functionality and circulation better, but to improve the uh, the surfacing of the driveways, the parking lot. And I think Jim can, or maybe Ray can speak more directly to that. And if Doug Hempstead is on, Doug, I'm sure has all the the specific details on the status of that. The permit's been issued, but the status of work that's on, that is contemplated under those permits. Do you have any other questions of Neil at this time?
Um, I also want to just um, one thing about the crosswalks. I just saw the the recommendations, I'm looking specifically on page two about the Westport Avenue um, at Stu Leonard's Southerly Access Drive, namely and and also the preceding paragraph about employee and um, overflow parking. Can you kind of walk through? If you're a Stu Leonard's employee, first of all, and you're driving to Stu's right now, is that where you're currently parking? Is that where an employee currently parks? And are they currently crossing that same road? Or is it going to be different now?
My understanding and um, Mr. Hempstead could probably speak better to this, but yes, some employees do park across the street and and uh, I don't think that's going to change. They park in those those lots across the street, obviously, to keep the uh, parking right in front of the building and the other side on the Stu Leonard's side open for uh, patrons.
Right. I guess my my question is, because it looks like there are, you know, suggestions having to do with um, making sure that the, you know, that the crosswalk is restripped, I assume, which makes it easier to see at night. Um, and also, I I'm wondering if for, you know, traffic purposes, or is is there going to be a need for something like a traffic guard or something like that for high traffic times? Um, at Stu, at Stu's, do you think that these revisions warrant that sort of improvement um, to Stu's sort of operations?
Not so much a traffic guard. Um, what Garrett, Garrett puts together at T M P, what he's basically talking about with some of these um, comments is putting in pedestrian uh, signal, pedestrian signals at the intersection. So at the southerly driveway, I don't believe there's any pedestrian walk, don't walk, or what, you know, pedestrian countdown signals. So there's actually, I don't believe any, even any push buttons to push uh, to call. Well, there might be actually, but it's it's very old, like the state project is anticipating to improve. It's it's old infrastructure out there now. So at the um, both Stu's driveways, uh, the cross Route One, I don't believe there are uh, walk, don't walk signal heads and what Garrett and the city wants is for those to be installed. In terms of the pavement markings, in terms of the crosswalks, the pavement is is fading out there in some some areas. The crosswalks are just very faint or they're faded quite a bit. And um, obviously, those should be re- restripped.
I don't mean to hog here, but I just want to follow up briefly on the question about that these, especially in terms of the um, accessible pedestrian buttons and making sure these these improvements that I assume are presumably to make the crosswalk safer. Obviously, T M P and their reports say that this is that, you know, that they recommend that Stu's, the applicant, be responsible for these improvements. When you say that the city wants it, is there daylight between what the city wants and what Stu's wants? Or is Stu's willing to commit to, you know, to um, to to funding and and making these improvements?
These, this is all these specific comments and uh, the basically the whole wish list of what the city has listed here. Um, it's it's, we just got these yesterday. So to be honest, internally, we haven't completely vetted all of this in terms of what Stu's wants. Obviously, Stu Leonard's wants to improve safety out there for not only the general public, but their um, their employees. But what is an appropriate fair share? It's another thing we have to, we have to discuss internally within our team and uh, with the city and the state. Because again, the city has a want, these are state uh, owned signals intersections. And um, in a perfect world, all of this stuff should be out there, yes. But it's a matter of what should Stu's really be responsible for in terms of contributing to improving the area.
I I understand that Stu's recently got these comments. I guess then my question would be, you know, what is Stu's timeline? When will they be able to, you know, have a response to these comments? Like what, you know, layout sort of, when we can expect to sort of hear more from Stu's?
Well, we're going to be putting in the application to O S T, which is a department in the Connecticut D O T over the next couple of weeks. And parallel with that, we're gonna, we're gonna request a meeting with this the state and invite the city to that. Who knows when that'll get scheduled, but hopefully within in the next two to three weeks.
But moving, moving Josh's question forward, um, it 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 seems to me the issue is, how do we approve this with all of these questions unanswered?
Well, if I may interrupt, uh, first of all, to reiterate what Neil said, uh, these lengthy comments were only distributed to me last night just before six, immediately then sent to my client and Neil. So not only have we not been able to vet them, but we also haven't been able to cost them out. Added to that, uh, apparently, T M P is not aware or was not aware as of two days ago of the state project. So it is essential that that us, T M P representatives and the state meet to figure out what component parts of the T M P wish list uh, will the state agree to and will the state impose as part of the O S T administrative decision process? And I I think one thing that the commission could do, if it's so, if it deems it so appropriate, would be to impose a bond on Stu Leonard to uh, guarantee some of the improvements, but it's very hard for us to commit to uh, any any of the items set forth in this list, since we don't know what the impact is from a financial perspective, and we don't know if D O T is going to agree to them. So I think it's beneficial for us, T M P and D O T to meet, to figure that out and to to come, if you need us to come back after that sort of, if after that conversation has taken place, that meeting has taken place, that's fine. But then that also adds to the delay and may impact the timeframe in January, when it'd be most appropriate and advantageous for us to start this project.
Attorney Sachi, uh, I I don't think either Josh or I are being critical. I mean, we understand that you just received this information. And it would be unreasonable to expect that that you would have the answers. I'm I'm simply saying that without uh, at least some of these answers, I don't know uh, if we're in a position to act.
I I agree with what Louis just said. I mean, my my question to Neil was not, you know, is there a problem? The question was, what's your timeline? Since you just got this, how long would it take you on your end, on Stu's end to cost it out? I realize that I can't expect to ask you what the D O T is gonna do. Um, but I think Louis has highlighted that there's a bit of a catch twenty two here.
Can can I add something to this conversation?
Sure, go right ahead.
When we widened the road back in nineteen ninety nine and two thousand, we widened a whole section from George Avenue down uh, to the end of the improvements across the street shopping center. Um, we want our uh, team members to be able to cross safely. And we had actually asked for a all around red stop at that crossing um, from across the street from Dry Hill Road. The state said no at that time because within five hundred feet or so, you have a crosswalk at the end of George Avenue, and they can cross from there. What they allowed us to do and approved was uh, a cross light that you press, but you have to cross on the green. I E., their interpretation was the pedestrian has the right of way. We we did those improvements. If the state will approve an all around stop like that, I I'm speaking for Stu Leonard's, and I'm I'm sure Mr. Kennedy, who's going to inherit whatever I'm saying here tonight, would agree with me that we we want the safest way possible across our our team members across the street. It is out of our hands what the state determines, because they don't want a whole row of, you know, every two hundred and fifty feet, three hundred feet in the past of stopping all traffic. And that was our challenge for that corner uh, over there. And that's why when you uh, uh, the parking lot that's directly across from the main uh, road sign there, uh, is is the George Avenue connection there, which has a a full stop is where those employees are supposed to be crossing. So uh, from that kind of improvement, I think I can comfortably say, if this state will allow it, we'd be more than happy to do it. But i- it is out of our hands.
Question, that's gonna, I apologize to interrupt you while you're finishing.
No, I just trying to, I trying to answer the question the best way again, that it it's not us not willing to put the crosswalks in with the countdown and trying to get a four way stop there. It's a question whether the state will allow us or not.
And the other issue is, we can't formally file anything with O S T until you act. So yes, you're right, Mr. Schulman, it is kind of this which comes first. It is, it is a challenge. And um, Mr. Goldstein, I didn't and and at all in uh, feel as if we were being picked on in any way. You're asking very valid questions, but we're caught in the midst of this. We we need to have the local approval for us to then move forward with the next step of D O T. I guess another uh, consideration that you you, something else you may want to consider, is if you decide to move this forward, anything that changes, we need to come back to you to to share with you and seek your further approval. Should the plan that's in front of you change, or should the crosswalks or other improvements that T M P is suggesting are not supported or objected to by D O T? It's a tough situation.
Is that so, is conditional approval an option? Is that, is that, is with attorney, so you said something that is feasible here?
Well, the go ahead, Brad.
I was just gonna say, we, so what we did with this was we kind of did something similar with what you've just approved with Jimmy Johns, which was take T M P's comments and kind of link them to a a bond in case they have to, you know, do any of this work. Um, I think it kind of makes sense for um, you know, your your conditions of approval are already based on T M P signing off in order for them to receive a C O. So as they go through the O S T process, they'll be able to, you know, work with T M P and kind of figure out what the scope of work would be on Route One, and then come to a agreement on that. Um, and then, yeah, so in order for them to to get a C O, they they need to get T M P's ultimate blessing on the project, but this would get them a zoning approval in order to to start that process moving.
All right, Marcela had a question.
I mean, this might be a little bit out there. I just want to say that as a customer of Stu Leonard's, and I I think you what you do for the community is quite incredible, and you have a model that I hope will end up in other places in the country. My thought is, you guys have the liquor store across the street as well. And have you guys ever done, uh, actually, have, I've actually stood in your parking lot and watched traffic. Have you guys ever thought about a complex that was more connected in an Ikea-like manner? And could such a things suggest maybe an underground pathway or above ground pathway? And more walker friendly? I I mean, you have a lot of stuff kind of crammed together near that ice cream area, and I could imagine you could use that parking lot, which is not as used in a way that would promote more business.
If I may just take a quick stab at that, there are issues related to um, ownership and liquor permits and other businesses that um, have implications in terms of bringing things together. Um, as far as pathways over the, over Route One, again, that's a state roadway. And I would suspect that D O T would not look favorably upon that. Um, and and I don't know, and I'm sure Jim Rotundo, if if he's on the line, could explain to us what kind of systems, whether they, what conduits and utilities exist under the roadway. Uh, and I don't necessarily think that is feasible. But there are issues related to the ownership and the operation of the package store that exists across the street on an independent lot and how this site works on this lot. And those are issues that um, are not part of this discussion, but they are certainly issues that we would have to deal with. And I don't think those are issues that can be overcome.
Yeah, thank you for entertaining the question. I recognize it's a little out there, and I am new to the commission, but I understand the urgency for why you guys want to get this approved, so that you can kind of make a motion forward.
No, it's excellent question, and thank you for, thank you for thinking outside the proverbial box, but uh, and that's what we hope these meetings are all about, and and they they typically are. Um, this this commission is is known for being um, thoughtful and attentive, and so we we do appreciate you bringing that to our attention. Don't think we can accomplish what you'd like us to accomplish though. Do any of you have any other questions for Neil? And would you like to now hear from Jim Rotundo, just basically on site plan or any of that? Or if any further questions of Ray? Jim, if you're on, if you could do a quick two minutes or less, that would be great.
Sure, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, um. Good evening. My name is Jim Rotundo. I'm a licensed professional engineer with Godfrey Hoffman-Hodge. Our offices are located at twenty six Broadway in North Haven. Ray's presentation, he he kind of hit pretty much on what's uh, going on with the site plan. Uh, the area along the building there right now is in a impervious condition. It's all paved area or uh, or parts of the building. Uh, the proposal is going to go in that immediate area, so we will not be creating any, creating any new impervious, impervious area. Uh, so we won't be increasing any uh, rate or or volume of runoff. Uh, therefore, we are not uh, proposing any modifications to the storm drainage system. Existing utility services, we're not proposing anything new. The existing facilities uh, will serve the uh, the building and the addition. There are uh, water and gas which will need to be relocated on site uh, just because of their proximity with the proposal. Uh, but we will not be needing to go into uh, Westport Avenue uh, for any new uh, utility services. Uh, there is some grading that will be done. There is a slope along the face of the building. Uh, so we'll be uh, doing some transition grading from the proposed addition into the parking area to make that all work. I think from a site work standpoint, that's pretty much, it's pretty much straightforward. Uh, we did receive comments from D P W uh, which we have a draft uh, work within the right of way along George Avenue. Uh, the uh, that area is located uh, within the urban boundary, so we we will be bringing uh, the curving in the sidewalk and the driveway entrance along the frontage there up to uh, city standards. We need to do some uh, coordination with any stockpiling of material. Uh, given the nature of the uh, construction, we don't anticipate a large you know, there won't be any topsoil stockpiled, uh, any big fill pile, so uh, we don't anticipate that being an issue. Uh, there was a question regarding a proposed drainage easement uh, within the parking area. That is actually something Stu Leonard's proposed to D O T uh, in the past. Uh, the storm drainage system runs through Stu Leonard's parking lot from Westport Avenue. And Stu Leonard's had proposed that to the state, so they would take over that whole line, uh, which the state does not want. So that's on the drawings right now, that'll be removed. As I mentioned, there are no uh, proposed sewer, new sewer connections uh, which was uh, D P W wanted verified. And then uh, we will just uh, we did receive W P C A uh, sign off. And Neil is working with uh, T M P. So those are essentially the D P W comments, uh, which we have no problems addressing.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, as Rotundo was speaking, I was also thinking that perhaps if it gives you an additional level of comfort, I will certainly take on the obligation, responsibility to keep you advised as we move forward through the process with T M P and D O T and the administration. as we move forward through the process with T M P and D O T and the administrative decision process. If that would be of help to you, I could either just advise Mr. Kleppen of give him status reports or Mr. Baker's status reports. So that at least you can be kept aware of where we are as we move forward into the next few months.
I, I think that would be welcome on our part.
That would be fine.
Anything else, Attorney Sachi?
I have nothing else at this point. I look forward to, if you have any other questions or comments, we certainly would be happy to answer them as best we can. Over to hopefully action by the commission tonight, so we can get through the next step to D O T and work more closely with T M P.
Okay, Steve, can you put up the resolution and talk to us about the concerns regarding the T M P questions that have been raised?
I'll defer to Brian. He's, he's the, he's the point guys.
So you've probably, the original resolution went out to you guys that had a lot of this. The yellow is what is new based on T M P's latest memo. So very
Brian, can you make that just a little bit larger?
Sure.
Thank you.
So it is very similar to the Jimmy John's language because it essentially is the same as the Jimmy John's language. So it just takes into account T M P's recommended improvements being made to Route one and to the driveway of Stu Leonard's. It has that a bond be posted. And I think, you know, as they go through the O S T process, they'll be able to figure out what that construction cost is and, you know, kind of hash that out with, with T M P. And then again, this is the same kind of stuff for that was in the Jimmy John's. And again, in order for them to get C O Z C, they have to obtain T M P's approval. So we always have that to kind of keep in our back pocket.
Brian, the only thing I could just see here on the first sentence of condition 10, it says that all conditions required by Norwalk T M P. But none of these are actual requirements. They're just listed as recommended improvements. So unless T M P comes back and says these are required, I don't think we can include that language. You know, unless you do something later. I mean, is it, is it worth changing it to recommended? Or, you know, do you think we, you know, are going to have to come back and redo this language later?
I'm fine with changing it to recommended if that you know, that kind of.
I mean, the only reason is because the document I'm looking doesn't say these changes are required for approval. It only just says the word recommended.
No, it's fair enough. Yep.
And it says, it notes that it's a preliminary review. It doesn't, additional comments may be forthcoming. Based on the applicant's response, I'm reading from the conclusion of the memo. So I just don't think we can say it's required, but even T M P isn't required.
Sure. That's a good point.
But Brian, before we change that word from required to recommended. At the end of all of the meetings between all of the people, isn't, isn't it going to be required as opposed to recommended?
I think that's only if, if D O T requires them and consents to the recommendations by T M P, since ultimately it's D O T's determination.
But I understand that, but at, at the end of all of these meetings, when the permits are, are issued and it's decided what everybody has to do, isn't it going to be a requirement? Not a recommendation at that point.
It will be, Richard. However, this refers to the eight, four, 21 memo. And my guess is that the requirements in the eight, four, 21 memo are going to be negotiated between Stu Leonard's, the state and the city. And they're going to change. So I think if we, we take out the reference to the memo. And simply say that all conditions recommended or or even all conditions required by Norwalk T M P shall be applicable to this approval. I just, I would just We're not, we're not at a point where we, where we have the final recommendations of T M P. We simply have a document which is the beginning of a negotiation.
I, I agree. And I just didn't want to see it in a situation where we're in December and we're trying to decide which of the recommendations of T M P are, should be enforced. As opposed to requirements. That's, that's all I meant. But I don't want to beat this to death. I know it's a word.
So you're suggesting that to remove reference to this memo?
Yes. Well, I, if you're going to do that, I, I think you can change recommended to require. Because at the point at which we land, they will be required.
Then you gotta, okay.
But it no longer refers to the memo.
Right.
So it's whatever, it's whatever they work out.
Yeah, then we'll just have to revise this.
That's it. Whatever they work out. All right.
As long as we also have the ability at some point in the future, should should there be changes that those changes, if they need to come back to you. We don't have, we're not precluded from doing so, obviously. That may need to be added as well.
Well, does it? I mean, you always have the right to come back to us with requested changes. Do you not?
I just, I think that should be clear because again, as you aptly pointed out, the T M P document was not requirements or obligations. They were preliminary recommendations. That may change by virtue of their discussions with the applicant and with D O T.
Well, I, I don't agree with you, but I don't have any objection to what you're asking.
I agree with the chairman.
Eventually there will be requirements. But I would imagine, but they just aren't any right now.
Right.
And I think we all recognize that this is fluid at the moment.
I mean, from my perspective, the, the important thing was that there wouldn't be any adverse impact on what impact on Westport Avenue with this project. And what we're talking about doing is, or what they're talking about doing is improving some old infrastructure issues. And so anything that happens is going to be an improvement. So I'm, I'm very comfortable approving this application with all, all these details being worked out by the people who know how to work them out.
And you also have a representation from myself and the applicant that should things change, we would keep you advised of those changes.
Right.
We have nothing else for you.
Okay. A motion on the revised language of the recommendation?
I moved to
So moved.
Okay, Michael moved. Who seconded?
Josh.
Oh, okay. Josh seconds. Any further discussion? All right. If not, let's do a roll call vote.
I mean, Steve, Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Sipone?
Yes.
Mr. Witherspoon?
Yes.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
And Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for your time. I hope your meeting ends quickly and I hope you enjoy the upcoming weekend. We appreciate your efforts tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. Okay, let's continue to move, move forward. Discussion of other items, status report. The industrial zone study, we all got a draft of that about an hour before the meeting.
No, not everybody.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just it went out to the subcommittee for that.
Oh, I, I apologize for that. When will it go to the full commission?
Hopefully in a couple of weeks. As the chair, I mentioned that the draft plan, I was hoping to get it out several meetings ago, but just took a little more time than anticipated. So we'll hopefully, we can get the committee together to meet in a couple of weeks, go over things. If based on edits that come out of that, then the consultant will turn those around and then we'll forward it out for public comment and definitely send it to the commissions as well.
Okay. The zoning regulation rewrite, Steve, you wanted to say something there?
Yeah, so we had the public meeting last week. Attendance was a little lighter than I hoped, but people have been watching it on YouTube, so that, that part's good. So the consultant right now is finishing up their kind of background work, which they think will get done in a couple of weeks. And working on programming for the, their planning event in mid September. So we'll have more information out about that shortly. Steve, how many people did attend? There was low 50s. Low 50s. Yeah. And how many other commission, 10 of us in minus 50s for you? And how many rewatches were there? There's over 50 on that so far. Okay, that's still relatively small numbers. Or I don't know, is that small number? Like what is the? I was hoping for, to me, a minimum watching or participating would have been 60, but hoping for like 80. Gotcha. Okay.
I still think we need more exposure on the website. I was looking at the website today, tonight before the meeting and it's pretty subtle, you know. We
As in the rewatch, the rewatch is not like the, the video itself is not prominent or?
I don't know, but I mean, is they, the consultants have set up a whole website with information of what they're doing.
You mean the promotion of that website?
Yeah, and it should be promoted on the city website. Where you see it easily, you know, it's because people aren't going to dig.
Well, this was one of the comments that actually was made at the meeting that we're not doing as good a job as we need to about informing the public about what it is we're doing. And that a lot of this probably ought to be right up front on, on the city's website, not just on the planning and zoning website.
Right.
We'll work with, we'll work with I T and see if we can do something.
Because people aren't going to dig, but if they see it on the front page, you know, they'll think, oh, well, let me go to that website. They're redoing the zoning laws. That's interesting.
I mean, we, we all know it's a mixed blessing. The more people who review this, the more difficult they're going to make life for us. But you know, that's the nature of democracy. You want as much input as, as you can get.
Well, also, you know, it might build a consensus. You know, conceivably.
Yeah.
Some seem to be good at that. I mean, that was one of the reasons why they were selected. Is their ability to work with the public and reach a consensus.
And I mentioned to Steve, I, I thought their presentation, the guy who did the presentation was quite good.
Yes.
He also handled some awkward questions very well.
Yes.
I was, I was pleased with that.
I totally agree.
Is there a press release? Is there a plan to do any sort of like press release or put it out there on some of the local news websites to push the that it's happening?
So we did get some press when it initially started up, you know, always could use more. And when the, when the September event kicks around, we're going to try to do a couple of different things. A few avenues that we've used in the past were close to us this time that I think would have helped get more of the word out. So we'll, we'll kind of rethink about some of those strategies for the next one.
And, and let's, let's put some of that on the consultant. Reaching out to local media, for example. Maybe they'll get a better response than we do. I mean, you know, local newspaper does not do a good job of covering the zoning commission. Like Nancy on Norwalk, which is a one person operation, seems to do a better job of covering zoning. Okay, South Norwalk T O D study.
The only thing I saw, they did put out a survey and they're trying to get some more information from some of the residents in that area before they go any further. It's as much as I know.
Steve, one of the things, sorry, if I can jump back to the
Go ahead.
The rewrite, one thing that seemed to strike a chord with people, and I know it's there, seems to be their, their baby of calling the, when they're up here in September, Planet Palooza. It seemed to rub everyone the wrong way. And I don't know if we can dial that back or make it, I don't know what others reactions were to that.
Actually, it was called Lala Palooza. And I said, no.
I wish it was Lala Palooza, right?
Everyone wishes.
And if you notice Planet Palooza is trademarked by them. I just wonder if people are turned off by that in some way, shape or form. We don't have to decide anything now, just like, I'm sure you've got some of the feeling from the room or the digital room. And I was like, oh, boy, like people are poo pooing the, it already. That's not, that doesn't seem like a good recipe to get people out from the onset.
It doesn't carry the gravitas that it should. You're right. I think you're right.
Yeah.
If anybody has any suggestions, I'll happy to forward them onto them, so.
I don't know why. I could, we could think about things or even just making it less.
The Palooza part.
But it's the Palooza part. It just sounds so childish. It sounds like it's a game, like it's a gamification of it. Like I get what they're doing. They're trying to make zoning fun. I get it and appreciate that. But I just feel like people are seeing that or taking it as a making light of it. And not seeing as like making it more approachable. And I don't know what the right answer is, but I think we should just.
Again, Steve, instead of putting the burden on us.
Guy with these.
Pass the comments, pass the comments on to them and see if they can come up with something else.
Alan, your internet's being real weird.
Alan, you're, you're breaking up.
This is gonna be fun. When you tell.
All right. Discussion of the merging of the planning and zoning commissions.
Nothing really new there, so.
Right. There was a public hearing held. And I don't think there's going to be any activity on that before the fall. When I, I guess they'll continue to move that process forward. Approval of the minutes, July 21st, our, our last meeting. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
All right, Richard moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Michael seconds. Any comments on the minutes, changes? If not, why don't we raise our hands? All those in favor? I Nick, Nick abstained. He wasn't at the meeting. Josh abstained. He wasn't at the meeting. Okay. Comments of the director, Steve, anything more?
No, just to put on, I sent out an email about the joint meeting with the planning commission on the 31st. So I'll send more information out about that.
Good. Comments of commissioners, I, Michael is going to be running the second August meeting. I'm going to be away. I don't have reliable internet and my family has told me I can't spend three or four hours on the computer on vacation.
Well deserved.
Any comments from any of the other commissioners? All right, if not, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Marcella should make it.
There you go.
Okay, Marcella makes the motion. Is there a second?
Most, most to adjourn.
Okay.
I'll second.
Richard and Josh both seconded. All those in favor? Okay, we're adjourned. I'll see you all in September.
All right.
August 31st.
That, that's true. I'll, I'll be there August 31st. Thank you.